Notice of joint public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special joint workshop with the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee on Tuesday, May the 8th, 2007 at 5:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
All right, if everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna tell them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and indivisible. Do we have anybody here for the invocation? All right, if not, Commissioner Longoody, if you...
Please bow our heads. As we give thanks for this wonderful day, we ask the Lord to look upon us and that His blessings may be amongst us as we go into this workshop and that we look very carefully at the decisions that we're about to make, that they be made in the best interest of the city and its people as we begin to prepare for a future, not just for us, but for our children. And we ask for continued blessings, Lord, for wonderful weather and for all our wonderful citizens in this, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. You may be seated.
Mayor, members of the commission, may I just make a kind of a reminder note to myself as well as everyone else that this is a governmental meeting that because of the highly political nature of these issues, I would just remind everyone that it's not a political forum, it's just a workshop, that it's not a public hearing, and that especially in with the proximity of the election at hand, we need to be very careful to not make statements that would tend to in any way support or oppose any political candidate or any political issue because that would be electioneering and that's prohibited by the state election code.
Thank you, Pat. Item A.
Item A, discussion regarding the findings of the consultant hired for the impact fee study.
All right. Mr. Medina?
Before you, it's the Capitol Advisory, the Citizens Advisory, the...
The Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Kayak.
For the city. See ya, a new member to the committee.
For the benefit of the viewing audience, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and the other members of your committee, please. Do you have a microphone or is there a mic?
Right there.
The only mic on the table is Mr. Snowden.
Well, it's for purposes of the, we don't want anybody complaining that anybody got muted on purpose.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Vella. I'm chairman of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. I would like to introduce the members of this committee, Mr. Michael Garza, Mr. Richard Zias, Mr. Mark Bernard, Mr. Padamada, Mr. Ruben Garcia, and Ms. Leanne Greer. I'd like to welcome our guest today, Mr. Jeff Snowden of Economist.com.
All right. All right, Mr. Snowden, before we begin, could you all check your mics?
Testing.
Test.
Test.
Four years we never had a prong. Now we do. Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Snowden.
Can you give him a mic? Yeah, give him the mic, please.
He needs a mic.
He's got it.
Move it up.
Test. Turn it on.
Mine, mine's still not working.
Try it.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission, members of the kayak and all in attendance. It's my pleasure to be here today and be of service to the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville P U B. Glad to be here today to discuss our initial findings of the impact fee study that we were engaged to prepare, and I'm glad to answer any questions throughout the course of the presentation. We do have prepared statements that we'd like to get through, but the intention is to make this a work session and answer questions, and I'm here to do that and look forward to any questions from anyone in attendance. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I will be going through that was on the screen. Before I get to that, though, I'm gonna be talking about what an impact fee is here in the state of Texas and what we put together in order to define an impact fee is a nine-step model in Excel based on a small system, based on some modest capital improvements, and I think it's an effective tool to define what an impact fee is and what the credits are, et cetera. So... So in this example, and I hope everyone can see the screen...
Y'all dim the lights a little bit, please?
In this example, we have a hypothetical system with a thousand acres in the service area, and as you can see, from a period of 2007 to 2017, it's not expected to grow. So we've got a finite planning area. Our planning period again is 10 years. In this example, we're assuming that the utility will go from 1,000 connections to 1,200 for a net addition of 200 connections. And the basic question is, if you're adding 200 connections, all of which is being driven by growth, how can you allocate the costs associated with serving those 200 connections in a way that's equitable and in compliance with Chapter 395 here in Texas? Well, we do that by first looking at the average demands on the system, which in this example is about 350 gallons a day. We use a peak day factor to get to the peak day because when you design treatment facilities, you have to use a peak day. That gets us to 500 gallons even. So, we've got 1,000 connections needing 500 gallons apiece, and we know we're gonna go up to 1,200 connections in the next 10 years. That means we're going to go from needing 500,000 gallons of treatment capacity per day this year to 600,000 gallons for a netted increase of 100,000 gallons over the next 10 years. This is just putting it in the terminology of M G D, million gallons a day. So let's quantify that incremental capacity of adding 100,000 gallons to the system. You can see in this example that instead of adding 100,000 gallons, the utility has added 300,000 gallons. They've gone from .5 to .8 for a net increase of .3. Now, why would a utility elect to build capacity greater than a 10-year need? Well, there are a lot of reasons for that. Economies of scale, you might have a contractor that sells a package plant that only comes in .3 M G D increments. Might be the decision of the management of the utility to overbuild in anticipation of growth. For whatever reason, in this example, the utility's elected to add .3 M G D to its treatment at a cost of 100,000 gallons, $100,000, excuse me. So, let's go to step five. We're already at step five out of a nine-step process.
Real quick, you mentioned connections. Connection fees have nothing to do with impact fees.
Exactly right, Commissioner.
Because we've been told, I know I talked to Commissioner Ernie Natus before when he was here, and he made everybody believe that connection fees were the same as impact fees. Just for the record, it's not, right?
Absolutely right. For the record, some communities that have connection fees in place that don't have impact fees in place have a capacity component in there, but it's not a legal connection fee. A connection fee should only recover the cost to buy the meter, set it, send the crew out to the field, break pavement, et cetera, and that's it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So we're allocating the cost of this $100,000 capacity expansion, and again, we know that for the next 10 years, we need 100,000 gallons increase. So that means 33% of the cost can go to that 10-year planning period growth. 67% has to be borne by someone else, and in this case, it's existing rate payers. And that's a key concept. To the extent that you overbuild capacity, there's only two places it can be borne financially, either the 10-year planning period growth via an impact fee or the current rate payers.
Jeff, where do you get that?
That's straight out of Chapter 395.
What is that?
That's the enabling legislation for impact fees here in the state of Texas, the local government code.
Will the actual statute limit what you can charge to the developer or what you can charge to the developer?
Absolutely. That's right. And that's a key concept. So in this example, again, a third of the 100,000 can go to be an impact fee. The remainder has to be borne by the current rate payers slash other system revenues. To the extent the system generates interest earnings on investments, connection fees collected, et cetera, they can also offset those costs with that.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
If the rate payer's paying 66%, and right now with our impact fee at 280, the developers aren't paying the 33%. It's more like 97. 97% is paid by the rate payer right now. I'm asking a question.
You can have a good question. Let's start with the...
Well, people need to understand. I want to understand. Yeah. Well, am I right or not, though?
Well, there's no corollary in this hypothetical example and the current situation, but I do intend to address your question directly, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So we've allocated the cost of this $100,000, and we've decided that 33,333 can be allocated to the 10-year planning period growth, the 200 new connections that we talked about originally. So our next step is to calculate the pre-credit maximum impact fee. Chapter 395 allows us to also recover the cost of debt. So in this case, we've got a 3.5% origination fee. That's eligible for recovery in an impact fee. That goes, that takes our 33,000 of 34,500. There's also the ability to recover the net present value of interest associated with debt if you finance the growth with the debt. In this case, we're assuming that over 10 years, you're gonna accrue $10,179 in interest charges on this debt, and those are real numbers based on 5.5% financing over 10 years. So that adds another 10,179, which gets us to a total of 44,679 that can be recovered in an impact fee divided by the 200 new connections that we've forecast to come online gives us a pre-credit maximum impact fee of $223 per new connection. Now, what's a credit? That's the next thing. The whole concept behind the credit is the utility is only going to assess monthly charges based on one rate structure. You're not gonna have one rate structure for your current customers and one for growth. So, again, we talked about before that $66,000 of this cost is not impact fee eligible. That means we've gotta adjust the current rate structure to incorporate that debt service. So let's look at that. We've got $69,000, that's the current rate payers portion with interest. Financed over 25 years at 5% gives you a monthly payment of $403 divided by the 1,000 current connections gives you 40 cents a month impact on your current rate payers. And keep in mind that that impact's gonna also be reflected in the statements that go out to your new customers because you're only using one rate structure. So let's go to step eight. We determine the rate credit. We know in a 10-year planning period, there's 120 months. Now, we're gonna use a very simplified assumption here and assume that all 200 new connections come online in month one. That's never the case, and the model that we use for these accommodates the timing of the new connections. But for simplified reasons, we're gonna go, we're gonna assume that they all come online on month one. That means for 119 months, every one of them will get a monthly bill for water service that incorporates, that includes 40 cents for capacity that they've already paid through an impact fee. So, that means over the 40, the 40 cents times the number of months, 119, means every one of those new connections will pay 48 bucks total over the 10 years out of their rates for this new addition of capacity. We got it, times the 200 connections gives you $9,600. So we gotta net that out because you can't charge development twice. So, we get to the final step. We figured earlier that 44,679 is their total cost with origination fees and present value of interest. We take out the 9,600, which we just decided they're gonna pay over the 10 years in rates, gives us a net amount of 35,079 divided by 200, gives you a maximum impact fee, net of a rate credit of $175. That in a nutshell is what an impact fee is. And I'm gonna stop because I'm glad to answer any questions. It is an example, it's a hyper-simplified example, but I think it's a good tool to develop the base understanding and then deal from there.
Is that the only way to calculate the impact fee?
That is for new capacity. Now, there's also a case, and this is the same example, where the system could have had 800,000 gallons already in capacity. In that case, we wouldn't have incurred $100,000 in new costs. We would have looked at what that original cost would have been, netted out accumulated depreciation, netted out any contributions and aid of construction by developers, and netted out the receipt of any grant proceeds. And in that net amount, we could have then went through the same exercise and recovered through an impact fee as well. In the case of P U B, I think we're gonna do both. I think in many cases, we're gonna, the impact fee is going to be recovering investments that have already been made, and in other cases, it's gonna be recovering investments that have to be made to provide the capacity for growth. I'm gonna move on to the PowerPoint. We're certainly able to come back to this if you need to. Our objectives, of course, are to develop an understanding of the impact fees, discuss our current findings and the status of the project, and develop a procedure for data collection, verification of my assumptions and findings, and establish the dialogue to get us done with this thing and give you all a tool to recover costs from growth, which I think is the overriding objective. Impact fee's a tool, and when you do it right and you incorporate all the players, when you finally get to the number, it's pretty undisputable about what that number is and what it incorporates. And I would say that we're about 80% complete with providing you that tool. And I'm really looking forward to wrapping this engagement up to the satisfaction of everyone involved. And of course, we'd like to agree on the next steps. What is an impact fee? It's a one-time charge paid by new development to finance the construction of public facilities needed to serve it. When you implement an impact fee, you do mitigate the financial impact of new development on existing rate payers, no doubt about it. An impact fee does offset pressures on your current rate base. The revenues from impact fees are very restricted by the Texas law. They have to go into reserve accounts and can only be used to construct the capital improvements that have been identified in the C I P, the Capital Improvement Plan that's been reviewed, subject to a period of public comment, and formally adopted by the governing This study is far more than an economic analysis. We have to provide a process by which you can arrive at an acceptable fee. I think that we're well into that process, and we're wide open to suggestions if you feel like we need to modify our approach, because every city's different. But I will say that the approach that we use and that we've developed over time has been very effective in communities throughout the United States, and we hope to have the same outcome here in Brownsville. We're here to conduct workshops and meetings with all the stakeholders and to examine the policy implications of the impact fee alternatives. And our goal, again, is to arrive at a consensus among all the parties. Other issues to examine, which are part of our scope, rate impact of the different impact fee alternatives. Is there an amount of capital improvement funding that you can do over the next five to 10 years that would actually be neutral, that could be 100% recoverable by an impact fee and have zero impact on your rates as they are today? We can identify that for you. Yes, there is a level of C I P. Is there, we need to discuss the sensitivity of impact fees to increases or decreases in rates of growth. Very important. The potential negative impact of fees and also the negative economic consequences of a lack of capacity. Everybody talks about, well, if you impact fees too high, then you're not gonna have growth, and that's gonna hurt the overall economy. The flip side is, if you don't have the capacity in place, if you don't have that much sewage treatment capacity, elevated storage on the water, ground storage, et cetera, that can also hurt economic growth because it's gonna go to where the capacity is available. The primary inputs of the study, of course, are the land use plan. That tells us how big your service area is and the rate it's growing and the direction the growth is heading. Capital improvement plan, which is even more important. Here's what we need to construct over the planning period, and here's the amount of money it's gonna cost. The assumptions about how the capital improvement plan is financed, as we just saw in the example, if you've got fees associated with selling debt and interest, that's recoverable. We need to be aware of those, so we provide you with a full picture so that you can then make the decision on how much of that picture you'd like to recover. And then also, because of the rapid growth in Brownsville, and I would classify your growth as rapid based on the 17 years of history I've reviewed, it's important to review these assumptions and calculations every two to three years. State law says every five years, when you're growing as quickly as Brownsville is, it's advisable to consider a more accelerated review period. And I wanna repeat that state law requires that you update your impact fee every five years. I know there's been some discussion about, well, we did a study in '90, now we're doing another study that accomplishes the same thing, and said, well, you, by law, you need to review these every five years.
So you would not recommend a 10-year plan, you would recommend a five-year versus oversized, a maximum five?
I would recommend a 10-year planning period to be reviewed every five years, mainly because of the economies of scale associated with building these type of infrastructure assets. It's hard to go out and sell debt to build five years' worth of sewage treatment capacity or five years' worth of elevated storage. That's why the 10-year's more appropriate. But by law, you have to come back every five and make sure you're on track.
And then if within 10 years, it's safe to assume that what we did in five years doesn't, we're not covering the next five years, so just avoid there capital improvements for the next five years. So instead of 84 million, you would see that grow to more?
To the extent that that capacity doesn't address all the needs over the next 10 years, absolutely. And I'm gonna talk about the capacity provided by most of the C I P. Some of it, I have not been able to detect what the capacity associated with the line item is, but the majority I have, and I can talk about that.
So the land use assumption would change in the capital improvement?
The land use assumption plan, from my perspective, the only thing that I think needs to change on that at this point in time is the rate of growth, and we'll talk about that. The land use assumption assumed a 5% per annum compound growth rate. I think your history demonstrates that you're growing at about 4%. That doesn't sound like a whole lot till you apply it over a 10-year period. Other than that, I think land use assumption's acceptable, although I'd certainly ideally like to flesh it out and really get specific about densities and land uses, and I've got a slide on that coming up. The C I P, though, the modification of the C I P, I think is warranted based on a few items that I'm gonna address in the next few slides.
Do you want to continue the...
No, go right ahead, sir.
He needs a mic. Audience, TV, I can hear you.
Did you pick me up in the...
No.
The problem, Dad, is it's gonna be on the replay.
On the replay, it won't pick you up. People at home, like...
Who's got the mic in there?
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay.
Just talk up there?
Okay. The primary issue on the impact fees is to what extent should the cost of growth be paid for by existing rate payers or by future development? The city has a right to set impact fee at any amount from zero up to the maximum identified in the study net of the credit that I just discussed. If the impact fee is set at a maximum, then council, in this case, commission, must consider the potential negative impact of the fee on growth. And if the impact fee is set at less than a maximum, and the financial plan that comes as part of this study should accommodate those revenue shortfalls so that you have the funds necessary to pay for all the capital improvements when you add up rate revenue plus impact fee revenue. The equation is simple. Your total capital outlays for this planning period are gonna be borne by the combination of rate revenues and impact fee revenues. One of them goes down, the other one's gonna need to go up.
So this last, excuse me real quick. So if the impact fee is set at less than maximum, monthly user rates must be higher to make up the difference?
If, you know, yes, sir. With a fixed capital improvement plan, in this case of 130-some-odd million dollars, if you're on the hook to build 130 million dollars' worth of improvements in the next five years or 10, you've gotta, you've gotta get it done with one of the two pockets of money. And to the extent that the one dwindles, the other one's gotta come up.
So it'd be safe to say that because we've been at 280 for all these last 17 years, that according to the model and according to what you're telling me, rate payers have been subsidizing what has not been paid in the impact fees since it has not been increased?
I think that what I've seen of the system, you've got a tremendous amount of overcapacity that I think has been funded by a combination of rates that are high relative to the region and to the state, and then also you have to incorporate the contributions of native construction that the development community has provided, which are not impact fees, but they are cash contributions that invaded the system. You can't not talk about those when you talk about the history of the funding.
So when you have a, basically a community that's had rates being increased over the last 17 years without an increase in the impact fee, safe to say that those rate payers have been subsidizing that, correct?
I think the combination of rate revenues and contributions has certainly put your system in a situation where you have a lot of overcapacity, and the rate payers certainly deserve credit for that, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, what are the contributions you're referring to when you say rate payers and contributions?
There's a, there's a couple of different mechanisms available to utilities to build infrastructure. Impact fees are one, and the other one are developer-specific exactions where a developer approaches a utility on... where a developer approaches a utility for a project and the utility says, in order to do this, we're going to need for you to build this amount of infrastructure and donate it to the utility. That's a developer-specific exaction that's recorded on the ledger of the utility. And it's not an impact fee, but it basically serves the same function, to provide capacity to accommodate growth. Yes, ma'am?
Jeff, now, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Jeff, one quick question. The perception though, that if the impact fee was much higher at the maximum allowable rate, then in turn, rates would go down? There would be no increase in rates, period? Because here we're saying that because of the impact fees, although rates have gone up, but consequently if rate, if impact fees were high, much higher, then rates would be lower? We would lower, we'd be able to lower rates? Do you agree with that?
No, sir. I don't agree with that because your current rate structure is based on a fixed operating and maintenance cost structure and a fixed debt structure that's not going away any time soon. The utilities got combined water and wastewater annual debt servicing between nine and a half to 10 million dollars through 2017.
So a higher impact fee doesn't mean lower rates?
The bed's made at this point in time?
That's what I was going to.
And it's not going to change because you incorporate a higher impact fee. What certainly would change is the amount of future debt you would have to sell to pay for the growth.
So what's matter, Jeff?
Let me ask it this way, Mr. Snowden.
Go ahead.
This goes, or what's happened is the direct result of the fact that the city and PUB were not updating and reviewing the CIP in a five-year plan like we should have been. Had that been going on, the adjustments to both rates and/or impact fee would have been able to do because we're in a position of planning for the CIP, developing and planning for the CIP for the next five, 10 years incremental. Is that right? Is that, is that a fair?
That's a fair statement and that's my fault.
Well, no.
Everything that's, that should have been done in the past, I'll take the blame for it. I really want to get past so-and-so didn't do his job.
No, 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 we need, we need, no.
So from here on out, I'm the guy who's responsible.
We need to understand that that's, we, these are the cards we've been dealt.
Yep.
And because we hadn't addressed this, this is, this is a reality of it. It's not the cast a finger, blame or point a finger. But we, we have to know that we didn't necessarily have a full deck when we started this, but okay, we know what we're missing and we're trying to, we're trying to get caught up.
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor, absolutely.
Let me ask you something real quick.
If I may, Jeff, real quick. I think what Commissioner Camarillo was trying to allude to is that we've been told that by adopting the Black and Beach maximum impact fee and the Black and Beach construction plan, that our rates would go down from our current rates. Would you agree with that?
No, sir, I wouldn't and I'm going to skip ahead to some numbers.
No, we did just, we just dropped rates, though.
No, what I'm getting at is, what I was going to ask is this. Okay, we're, we're hearing that, you know, the rates aren't going to drop, but rates aren't going to drop because we're 17 years behind. Where our ratepayers have been paying for what that impact fee should have been paying. Had that impact fee been raised every five years, like you said, somebody had done, we're down the line, drop the ball. Had those impact fees continued to be going up, you know, right now, we won't be able to lower the rate because we're still paying for 17 years' worth of rates, of impact fee rates not going up. So it's, it's not because we're going to find a magic number. We're still trying to catch up.
Well, it's not, it's not a situation of catching up per se. It's a realization of the lack of planning that we did.
That's right.
In 16 years, from 1990 to 2006, we spent 90 million?
91 million, 91 million, 376,000.
91 million in capital improvement projects. Now, now they're trying to tell us that in the next five years, we're going to spend 138 or 134?
No, 84 million direct, attributed directly to new development.
Well, initially, but, but the CIP.
134 million.
The CIP was for 134 million, 84 of it eligible for, for impact fee.
Related.
Impact fee related. The, the problem, and that also includes an estimated 15,000 new ESUs over the next five years.
No, 20,000, I think it was 20,500.
Over five years?
Over five years.
Now, as I understand it, over the last five years, that we've, that the city's been experiencing arguably the largest growth that we've ever had, we've been averaging about 1,200 or 1,300 ESUs a year? Eddie? That was a number that I was given back in the fall when I asked the question. The numbers that, that were estimated was, was coming out, well, I thought it was 15,000. I guess the estimate, the average would actually be a larger number than that if it's 20,000 over five years. It'd be 4,000 instead of 3,000.
But you have to take into account that some, versus some commercial properties use more ESUs and they're accounted for as a unit.
I, I understand. My understanding was the estimate, what we've experienced over the last, I'm sorry.
About 2,000 new ESUs on the water side.
Over the last five years?
Per annum over the last.
Okay, so, so the estimate was calling for double the growth anticipated that we had not been experiencing, that over the last five years, we've experienced the most growth we've ever had in this city. My point has been, I don't understand how we need, why we need so much capital improvement over the next five years that we've not done over the last 16 years and you're predicting, or there was a prediction of growth that over the last five years, we hadn't experienced. So we're looking at double the phenomenal growth that we've had over the last five years, therefore necessitating the need for new, for new capacity. Again, and I want to make it clear, and I think, Mr. Snowden, I reviewed your, your PowerPoint and the information. I don't think anybody should shy away from having more information to make an informed decision. Whatever that number is, I've never quarrelled whether it's high or low. I had my concerns, but this is the first time we've done it. I think the next time is obviously going to be, the commission will be better informed and be more familiar with the process, as will everybody involved, so, but I, I think. You don't, your, your goal here is to provide information? Is it, is it to, to set an impact fee at a low or high amount? Was anybody, was that, was that your goal, Mr. Snowden?
No, sir.
Did anybody tell you, guy, we want you to find a low impact fee?
No, sir. Not if we want to continue in this business practicing consultant impact fee. We need to, we need to be unbiased and we, and we will be unbiased.
Okay.
And I think we all agree that, that we do got to raise the number in the impact fee and I think, Mr. Snowden, you're going to be able to help us come up with that number. I think you mentioned it earlier, that'll be a, a number that'll be neutral, rate neutral. So where we can set the impact fee at a higher amount, yet not have to raise the rates.
Yes, sir. And I want to talk about, first I want to give the floor to Mr. O'Malley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you, Commissioner. This is not the first time we do this. This is the third time we do it for a purpose of correction. And I disagree with Mr. Snowden saying that rates are not affected and rates are not lowered because in the past, since 1994, we've had 11 rate increases in water and wastewater. And if you eliminate those increases, if they never came before the commission, we'd have lower rates, bottom line. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then we would.
Hold on a second. I want to make sure we're clear. So you're saying if we'd not had rate increases, we'd have lower rates, right?
What I'm saying is that if we did what we were supposed to have done in 1990 when we adopted the land use assumption, we adopted capital improvements and we funded the, the capital improvements as it was proposed with the 2013, you wouldn't have had a need to have the rate increases because you would have had an oversight committee to tell you, hey, you need to lower the impact fee or, or raise it to meet growth. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Snowden?
If, if you would have implemented $2,100 in 1990, I think it's safe to say that the level, the degree of rate increases since then would probably have been smaller, yes, sir.
Smaller or none? Because, because you have an oversight committee that can say, okay, let's adjust the impact fee up or let's adjust it down to cover the cost of capital improvements?
Just due to the fact that the law states that impact fee revenue cannot be used to pay operations and maintenance and you've had the
Definitely.
effect of inflation over the 17 years, you would probably have had to have raised rates over the.
But it depends on how much.
That's what we were told last time.
Let me finish. I mean, you know, I'm not here to debate, but what I'm saying is we're talking about capital improvements related to growth, Mr. Snowden. We're not talking about any other stuff. We're talking about capital improvements related to growth. If we would have done what we were charged with in 1990, adopted a rate and overseeing that rate, the capital improvements, the land use assumptions, you could monitor it up or down to, to mitigate any rate increase related to new growth and impact fees. Is that right?
I agree with that, absolutely.
Okay, so that's, so then we agree that the rates would have been lower because of that, if you had done that that way, okay. So let's, let's be very clear on that. Now, the ESUs, very good question, Mayor, about the ESUs. They're kind of optimistic and the kayak committee, for most of you that were not here back then, but Leanne Greer can attest to this and I'm sure the chairman can attest to this, we've discussed the amount of ESUs and we all agreed that they were optimistic. But the reason they were optimistic, we looked at the optimistic side, knowing that we would have a way in the checks and balances to oversee, that if the, if the, if the projections are not met, the kayak committee would then oversee and lower it or raise it, because these are just projections. They're just projections, okay? It's not engraved in stone, but it has a way to monitor it. If the growth is there or if it's not there, then you, you don't do the capital improvements that you projected and you would adjust the impact fee. Is that right, Mrs. Greer? Okay, is that right, Mr. Chairman? Okay, so there was a way to, the 3,090 was not engraved in stone, okay? Now, the economic analysis that Mr. Snowden is talking about, shouldn't they take into account the demographics, the per capita income, the cost of homes, the unemployment, the proximity to Mexico, disposable income, population age, disposable income, cost of utilities and all that? I mean, should, should, the economic analysis, take that into account.
Do you have a copy of his report, Mr. Miles?
Yes.
Okay, I thought some of that information is included in this.
No, but, but I mean, to do economic analysis as far, I didn't see some of this stuff like the cost of utilities and the unemployment and all that stuff. I didn't see that. Okay, so I'm wondering if the charge was, when I was here, before you all decided to hire an economist, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Atkinson, the charge was to keep rates down and the impact it would have on the industry, the impact fee. Is that right, Mr.?
Yes.
That was a charge. So now I'm hearing, and I think it's a matter of your opinion because you're not an engineer, you're not an expert in impact fees, you're an economist, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I can't multiply.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, your, 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 your expertise, your expertise is being an economist, not an engineer or an economist.
Mr. Miles, hold on a second. You started off this by saying you weren't going to debate.
No, I'm not, but I'm, I'm trying to, no, I'm not. I'm trying to understand where we're going with this because this is, this has evolved into, into not an, an impact fee, I mean economist study, but an engineering study, redoing the, the study, that's what I, I'm hearing here.
Did the Black and Beach study take into those things that you just mentioned to consideration?
We didn't hire him as an economist. We hired him as an impact fee based, based on, on the land use assumption provided by the city
Correct.
and the capital improvements provided by PUB and the discussions we had publicly with the kayak committee, the city commission and the public.
Okay, so that's why it's important that we have an economist.
But we, that was not our scope of work.
But that's what he's saying. He wants him to do those things he's saying, not come up with all this other stuff.
The question is, how much do we want to grow? The question is, how much do we want to grow?
I understand. If, if you have a question, Mr. Miles, I don't mind that, but if not, let's let Mr. Snowden continue with his.
Okay, the question is, the way the engineering study was done, okay? The methodology and the analysis, we can disagree maybe with the amount of growth. We can disagree with the amount of capital improvements and we can disagree with those little factors you point out. I'm not an expert, okay? But doesn't that have a mechanism to protect developers and ratepayers through the kayak committee to oversee this impact fee and adjust it up or down? Does it have that mechanism? Yes or no?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
The Black and Beach report, okay, based on the land use and capital improvements and all that, does it have a mechanism to oversee the projections, okay? To adjust the impact fee based on those projections, whether they're fulfilled or not? To adjust the impact fee and keep rates down. Does it have that mechanism?
No, it does not.
Through the kayak committee, you can't oversee this? We're supposed to, we're supposed to, we're supposed to oversee this and monitor it as recommended?
It's certainly within the power of this body to do that.
But wasn't that the recommendation?
That was not enumerated in the Black and Beach study at all.
But that was established by the body here, the commission and, and the kayak.
Responsibility of the body.
It wasn't established.
But it was not in the Black and Beach study.
Real quick, Mr. Bernard, I just, I just wanted to say something real quick. Just to respond to Mr. Camarillo, he says that more than likely, we may have to raise rates even if we drop the impact fee. I understand that because we saw that with Mr. Leandro from PUB had it up here.
Commissioner, I never said that we would raise rates.
Or, or you.
So let me, let me, let me tell you what I did say. What I said was, if we had a high impact fee, the high impact fee was, was implemented, does that mean that rates in turn would go down? That's what I said. So let me correct you.
Okay, so even though in 2009, Camarillo, we're going to have to raise rates, has per these guys going to New York, getting the bond, they're, they're, they're holding us to, in 2009, to raise the rates. How much depends on where the impact fee is. Do you want to raise it $4 or do you want to raise it 10 cents? Yes, you're right, we may have to raise rates or, or maybe not do nothing. But in 2009, it's going to come about to where, how much are we going to do? PUB did that presentation and they said, yeah, you did, no one's disputing that. It's just how much do you want to raise the rates in 2009 when these bond people come back down and say, hey, look, this is what you were supposed to do?
Commissioner, what I'm talking about is going back to what the mayor.
Well, talking to him.
No, you, again, you're misstating the fact. There has to be a commitment from this body with regards to issues of revenue. When a bondholder lends money to this city or to PUB, they want to make sure that they're going to get paid back.
Okay.
And the city has to understand those responsibilities for those bondholders. And if you don't pay your debt back, guess what? It screws up your credit rating.
Well, I totally agree.
All right, well, I, I understand.
So you're, so you're.
No, let me, let me, let me finish. There has been no commitment by this city or by PUB to raise rates. What the plan of finance called for is that in the event that rates were needed, that's something that has to be addressed in order to pay the debt.
Exactly.
But if the growth is there sufficient to pay the debt without incurring any additional rate increases, then guess what? You don't have to have any rate increases. So you made an assumption in the statement without, again, trying to misinform. Maybe you're doing it unintentionally.
No, I'm basing it on what the, the presentation was. He's right here, bring him up.
Who's right here?
Leandro from PUB.
I'm not disputing that that's what it said, Commissioner. What I'm telling you is that there's no commitment. That's what the plan of finance, but if the growth, we were also supposed to raise it, we made a commit, they wanted us to make, make a commitment to raise the rate for the next five years. Where's Leandro?
He was with us.
Is that not right? And we said we'd only agree to it one year. And the growth so far, and the growth so far has been sufficient that there's been not, that the need hasn't been created that we have to go back and revisit that situation so far. But if, but if we have three down years or two down years or one down year and PUB says, you know what, our finances aren't looking as good as we anticipated, guess what? They're going to come back to this city commission and they're going to say, in order to meet our obligations, operation maintenance and debt, we need to do X. That's just the way it works. And to try to say that it's not, that's not going to happen or that won't happen is unfair and it's misleading. All right, Mark, unless, do you have a question?
I had three comments back related to this previous study.
I interrupted Commissioner Camarillo. I wanted to make sure that that point was made. Sorry, Commissioner.
Point was made, Mr. Bernard, go ahead. If we look at the first example that Jeff gave us, showing how a rate, how a impact fee is created or what it looks like, that only picked up 33% of the 100%. Because the way you have to build these monsters, the sewer plants, the water plants, the infrastructure, you're not going to just build exactly what you need, you're going to have to overbuild. So the ratepayers will absorb that difference because by law, we can't add it to the impact fee. So there's no getting around that unless we do substandard development of new, of new infrastructure. The other thing too is if you look 17 years ago, our, those water and sewer rates only have doubled in that 17-year period. How did we, were we able to hold them down that much? When I talked to John Bruceak last meeting, he said that we had EPA grants available to us with all other forms of public finance were available to do plant expansions, et cetera, which he says have dried up now. I believe there are still alternative public finance vehicles that we will get into later as we go down this study road. And so then the, the, the thing that I think we'll get into as Jeff continues to unfold his, his presentation is the need, is the capacity and the need thereof.
Thank you. All right, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there needs to be a correction. The statute 395 is referred to by Black and Beach. It says we must comply with Black, with the statute 395. Black and Beach says that. And that's, statute 395 says dictates that we have a committee to oversee the impact fee. Is that right? So then it is, in essence, saying what I just said up there, that there is a mechanism to oversee the impact fee. The impact, based on statute 395, that Black and Beach recognizes that.
Okay. Sure.
Nobody disputes that.
Yeah, nobody disputes that.
It was not part of the Black and Beach report.
But there certainly was a reference to chapter 395, so, yeah, I agree with, I agree with Mr. O'Malley. What, what the mayor discussed earlier is key. When you start talking about debt issuance, and before I get too far, I'm going to say that I'll be making some statements today and I would defer to your financial advisors. and I would defer to your financial advisors for any follow-up questions on this, because these are real critical, um, and Estrada also can answer these more fully, but I have reviewed your bond ordinances and official statements, and, uh, I think it's critical that everyone understand the impact of the constraints you're under right now with your bond issues, which aren't, uh, which aren't out of the ordinary at all, um, and to understand them within the context of the capital improvement plan as it was presented in the original plan. Original plan called for a, a growth of fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-eight new water units, thirteen thousand six hundred seventy-two new sewer units, if you multiply that times the maximum fee, you get total impact fee revenue over the five years of nineteen point seven water, twenty-three point nine sewer, for a total of forty-three million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand. The plan called for a total of a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars in capital improvements, one twenty-eight, one thirty-four, just depends what you look at, I, I duplicated the figures and didn't round up, and that's the difference, um, so, that means if you're collecting forty-three in impact fee revenue, and you're gonna construct, and you're on the hook, because you've developed a capital improvement plan, you've submitted it for public review, and you've formally adopted it as a body, you're on the hook to build a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars worth of capital improvements over the next five years, that means you're gonna need to come up with eighty-four point three million dollars. Well, you've, uh, went out, you've developed a capital improvement plan, you've, uh, gone through a thirty-day public review and comment period by chapter three ninety-five, then you've adopted it and made that a part of the impact fee, and when you go through that process, the law has you go through that for a reason, because when you design an impact fee, you're basically committing to the development community that those improvements will be there in the timeframe stated in the plan, so that then the developer can use that for his planning and cash flow financing, et cetera.
And, and is that money available, or is that money that would need to be borrowed?
Well, in this case, we've got, yes.
Mr. Snowden, I'm gonna ask you a question, just to clarify one thing, this, this is real numbers, right, this is not an example?
These are the numbers from the C I P, yes, sir.
What I want to clarify, out of the hundred and twenty-eight million dollars that is part of the current C I P, which is a cap, capital improvement plan, it's a plan, right?
Yes, sir.
The, the spent a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, out of that one twenty-eight million, you will only be able to raise forty-three million from, from impact fees?
That's right, the maximum number provided, times the number of service units to come online.
I mean, forty, forty-three out of the one twenty-eight is impact fee eligible?
Is impact fee, is anticipated impact fee revenue, yes, sir.
Okay. So, in other words, the developers through the impact fees will only pay forty-three million, is that a simplified version of that?
Over the next five years, that is correct, if you collect all of it, and those number of new units come online during the plan.
Okay, well, hold on, Miss Zayas, so, at forty-three million, what's, what's the impact fee, is that at the max?
That's at three thousand and ninety dollars.
Okay, okay, and so where does the other eighty-four million come from?
The other eighty-four million dollars has to come from ratepayers.
So, if you, if you put the max, and you, and you, if the city...
Based on the capital improvement plan.
You're saying the city commits to, put a, 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 an impact fee of three thousand ninety and adopt the whole twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-eight million dollar, the ratepayers are gonna have to absorb eighty-four million dollars?
Eighty-four point three million dollars needs to be raised in order to finance the capital improvements, some of that might be able to become from interest earnings, some of it from non-rate revenues like connection fees, the majority will have to come from rate revenues, which, which account for the vast majority of revenues to the system.
So, what does that happen, what, what happens to rates?
Well, in rough numbers, eighty-four million dollars financed over twenty-five years at five and a half percent, results in an annual debt service of six point two million, divided by, who we got?
Six point two million a year?
Six point two million dollars a year, divided by the number of current connections you got on the system, is a hundred and twenty-nine a year per connection, divided by twelve is ten dollars and seventy-five cents per month, added to the sixty-five a month your, your ratepayers pay.
So, how much percentage, how much percent rate increase is that?
It's about a sixteen percent hike.
So, the rates will have to go sixteen percent hike, if, if...
Over the next five years.
If you adopt the three thousand ninety impact fee.
But right now, we went back down to two eighty.
If, if we go back.
Now that we're at two eight, Rick, this is what I want to tell you, now that we're at two eighty, it's not, it's not eighty-four million, it's...
It isn't affected the C I P plan.
I just want to get it clear, if the city goes ahead and adopts the hundred and twenty-eight million capital improvements, that means that the city is agreeing to build a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars of capital improvement.
That's, the city is...
Now, the city have that kind of cash, the P U B have that kind of cash, where does the cash come from?
I'll defer to P U B's financial team on that.
Okay.
Well, let me ask you something real quick, Rick.
Hold on, hold on, hold on a second.
Who, who drives the C I P? Who says this is what we want in the next five, ten years? Developers, right?
No, P U B does.
No.
P U B, well, P U B works with the developers to see what they want as far as growth in the next five, ten years, yes or no?
I don't, I don't.
Yes, they do.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on a second, who's, Eddie, who's here? John's not here, is he?
That's, Eddie, he's here.
So, so Commissioner Atkinson is, is saying that the reason you have a hundred and twenty-eight million in capital improvement is because you, P U B, went out and listened to the developers, and this is what the developers wanted, is that right?
There, there's a whole lot of in here that is getting all...
I, I understand that, I want to make sure.
Let me tell you, the C, the C I P...
First, just answer that question.
I can't answer it.
Is the C I, is the C I P based upon what the developers tell you that they want, or is this based upon what?
A capital improvement plan was prepared by Brownsville Public Utilities Board, and it has various aspects into it, part of that could very well be the growth projections, the anticipated projects, we certainly know what projects are coming online, because developers have submitted information, it isn't solely driven by information gathered by developers, a part of that may very well be, I mean, that's part of the planning process, but the, there's another thing, too, on this, and, 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 you know, we, we've already gone through a lot of this stuff, if you recall initially, when the C I P was presented, and Leandro is here, if you have any specific questions, but if you assumed that we were going to implement that plan, it had, the way you financed it was three ways, there was that portion that was the impact fee, there was that portion that was gonna be generated incremental growth by the system as it grew, and then there was a piece that you were gonna have to debt finance, it isn't the entire eighty-four million that you're gonna have to debt finance, and then if you recall, you asked us to prepare four different scenarios, and at each of those scenarios, those pies shifted, whether you were gonna have to borrow more money, borrow less money, bigger impact fee, smaller, so, so there's a lot of variables into this.
All that was with the assumption that you were sticking to the same number, that being a hundred thirty-four, a hundred twenty-eight, whatever that C I P list was.
I, I'll make another comment about...
Is that right, Eddie?
If we were to do that, those numbers were driven off that C I P, that is correct.
Right, you had, you had a total amount.
And, and it was driven off of whatever the maximum allowable was.
You had a total amount.
That's correct.
And then you figured out, if you, if you stick at nothing, you go to the max, and then we had our scenarios.
That's correct.
But it was all based upon the fact that the driving force was, we have a capacity need, or a capa, C I P of a hundred and thirty-four million at the time, eighty-four of it, eighty-five of it being, uh, capacity related, right?
Yes, if you stick to that scenario, now...
I mean, that, that, you have to have a number, a, a whole, a hundred dollars, and then you use that to divide it into how, the four different scenarios that you did.
And if you begin to change the numbers, then the scenario begins to change.
Absolutely, okay.
So, uh, but, but, yes, if, if you recall, all of those scenarios were predicated, if, if you did this based on these numbers, this is what would occur, and then there was multiple scenarios that, again, affected those, those pieces of the pie depending on how much was gonna be generated through the system, or impact fees, or how much debt you were gonna have to incur.
Okay.
Jeff, Jeff, real quick, real quick, since you know numbers, at three thousand ninety, since we're not paying three thousand ninety, we're paying two thousand, you know, two hundred and eighty dollars, what does that, what does it do to the total I F revenue? Oh, total C I P, what is, no, what does it do to the difference to be funded from rates?
Uh, let's see.
Just so the people at home can know and understand what's going on, if you don't have three thousand ninety, or at two hundred and eighty right now, what does that do to the difference to be funded from rates? It goes up, it's common sense, right?
Right.
So, that's what puts us at ninety percent.
It does.
If we did, if we did that C I P plan, if we stick to that.
Yeah, but let me ask you something, this is the question I asked.
And, and if you have that growth.
Yes, and this is what I asked, P U B.
Can I, can I put a tag, can I put a tag on that response, Mr. Commissioner, based on the premise that you need all the capacity associated with a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar proposed? Yes.
Yes, okay.
But that's a big assumption.
But, oh, but you, but then you're gonna come up with, well, because the south plant is at forty-five percent, so we can divert some of the wastewater, water back to the, to the south plant, that's what you're saying, right? But did you ever come to think that you need to put lift, lift stations, you're gonna have to go through downtown Brownsville underneath, and did you know that P U B already told us that that's gonna cost twenty million as opposed to the twenty-four million for the new wastewater plant? So, it's still the same.
Well...
You can't, you can't say, well, I'm gonna put a couple oranges from the north plant to the south plant, you can't do that without changing infrastructure.
You're asking him questions about information that he hasn't yet presented, let him finish his report, and then you can make your assumptions and try to do your argument that you've been working on, let him finish.
Because I already know the answer.
And I want to...
If you know the answer, then don't ask the question.
Some people at, at home need to know, Eddie.
Mayor, for the purpose of clarification, the three thousand ninety, please, I think everybody needs to understand, because Mr. Rick Zayas is new, okay, uh, Mr. Zayas, the three thousand ninety is not the magic number, because if you want for development to pay for itself, then you would have to raise it, what, fourteen thousand dollars per E S U, or whatever.
Go ahead, Rick, get the mic.
Whatever, I'm, I'm just using a number, okay, you have to raise it a lot more than three thousand ninety, right, Mr. Jeff? If, if development, development attributed directly to the impact fee, you have a way to raise it more than the three thousand ninety, the three thousand ninety came into account, whatever the numbers, was to keep rates down, so that was thirty-three percent of the cost of the eighty-four million.
No, three thousand ninety was, was a maximum allowable, yeah, it was a maximum allowable.
So, you can't outraise more?
Because...
Are you sure, Rick? I stand corrected, I stand corrected, you sure?
Now, and, and, Mr. Snowden, the reason he's asking that is because of the debt issue.
You knew. That, if, shoot, and I brought that to the attention, that if we include the debt, it would go up.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, I mean, it is allowed, that, that's, that's what I was trying to point out.
But, but that's not even here either, right, because it still doesn't have the three thousand ninety, there's not a credit calculated in there.
There's a plus and a minus, Mr. O'Malley hit on the plus, which is you, you are allowed to incorporate origination cost and the net present value of interest that you debt finance. On the negative side, you also have to remove the amount of revenue that will be generated through rates from these new connections expected to come online.
Does the statute talk about anything in regards to what you can charge if you haven't done the rate credit calculation?
Yes, it does.
So, what does it say?
The statute indicates that it gives you two options, you can calculate a credit representing the amount of revenue raised by rates and admissible in taxes, some utilities also generate or pay C I P with admissible in taxes, you can go through the process of developing a plan to identify that amount of revenue, or you can divide by two, and divide a fifty percent credit.
So, do you know that credit's been done? It was calculated in the Black and Beach report?
Uh, I, uh, do not believe that it was done, I think it was done to the extent that existing capacity was, uh, part of the equation, but the new capacity, no, it wasn't done.
So, then, so then by statute, right now, we couldn't even charge the three thousand ninety without that calculation, in other words, we can only charge fifteen fifty, is that correct?
I haven't done that math to be able to...
So, the half of the three thousand ninety?
Really, yes, but you'd also have to incorporate the net present value of the interest in the origination fees associated, but, yeah, I did want to finish this example, because this is key, so...
You may want, you may need to go back a little bit, since we haven't interrupted you enough.
Okay, no, I don't, I don't mind, I'm glad to answer questions, what, we went through determining that about eighty-four million needs to be funded from something other than impact fee revenues, which equates to ten dollars and seventy-five cents a month, add on for rates, but what we didn't talk about was operations and maintenance, what is it gonna cost the system to operate and maintain each fiscal year, new sewage plant, new transmission lines, new lift stations, et cetera, et cetera, because the law is very clear that zero percent of O N M is eligible for recovery via an impact fee, and that's critical, what that means is, to the extent that you can maximize the investments you've already made, and that you're already paying O N M on, and minimize the new stuff you want to build that you might not need, you're minimizing the impact on your ratepayers, and I really want to stress that.
Well, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
On the north plant, if we expand, and P U B doesn't have to hire operations and maintenance on it, that, that, that helps too, right, not having to raise the rates?
Absolutely, I think, I think that if you expanded it, and I was reading in your rating documents, that it is scalable, is what they call it, up to another additional ten M G D, that would certainly resolve, uh, help to resolve the question, I think it wouldn't be an O N M neutral approach, you would have to probably incur more electricity, chemicals, and probably bring on new operators, but it would, you know, certainly beat the cost of operating a brand-new five M G D plant with a whole new footprint.
Who would be best qualified to make those kind of decisions, because the kayak committee, prior to you being here, it was brought to our attention, if you remember, upgrading the north...
Talk on the mic, Pat, so I can hear you. Who would be best qualified to make those kind of decisions as to what capital improvements we need, because prior to some of these new members here, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Greer or Chairman, it was brought to our attention, different scenarios, to build a new plant, which was the last, uh, option, and to upgrade the existing north plant, or to, uh, transport sewage to the south plant, which has more capacity, after the presentation that was made to the kayak committee, it was gonna cost twenty-four million to upgrade, to, to transport sewage for collection points and lift stations and everything, to, to transport sewage to the south plant, and it was also pointed out to, to the kayak committee that to add capacity to the north plant, we would be limited based on this, on the space that we have, and with the EPA regulations coming down, being more stricter and all that, when we looked at cost of twenty-five million for a new plant versus transporting sewage to the south plant, or expanding, uh, the, a limited expansion on the north plant, which would require another, uh, uh, new plant anyway in five years, you know, if we looked down the head, even if we were to expand the north plant, based on the cost of twenty-five million for a new plant versus twenty-four million for transporting, and I forget what the cost was for the expansion there, it was decided based on the recommendations of the experts, the engineers, P U B, and the kayak committee, to go with a new plant, but who, in your opinion, would be best to make those kind of decisions, because obviously you have an opinion, they may be right, they may be wrong, but, I mean, who would be best, I mean, you don't have the numbers of what it would cost to expand a new plant, you don't have the numbers what it would cost to transport the sewage to the south, so who would be best to, to make those kind of decisions?
I think, uh, the engineering staff of P U B and their external consultants would probably be ideally suited to make those decisions, and, uh, the recommendation I, I made last week, and, uh, we did hear quite a bit of response, but we never heard that there was an alternative for twenty-four million on conveyance, so I'm glad that that's already been explored, because last week, we didn't hear that, but the recommendation that I made was that, when you do look at those alternatives, that you, you, you apply a life cycle cost analysis to it, because it's not just about the cost to build it upfront, it's about the cost to operate over twenty, twenty-five years, and as we said earlier, and I'll keep repeating, any new O N M comes straight to the ratepayers, you can't recapture it with an impact fee, so you want to minimize O N M going forward, if you're really focused on maintaining the rates as they are and not increasing them.
So, you, you're, you're saying it'd be best by the experts, which are the engineers that have to deal with this?
Yes, sir, Mr. O'Malley, I agree, absolutely.
You said something about last week?
Yes, sir.
What, what?
We, uh, discussed this issue last week at length.
At the kayak meeting?
Yes, sir, regarding the five M G D expansion, which...
The entire kayak committee was there?
I believe just about all of them were there, maybe, okay, yeah, we, we had, uh, did we have a quorum? I guess we did, yes, sir.
I think the chairman, who was doing one from the regional kayak committee, is not on here, or you were here?
Okay, so...
This is a kayak now, right?
And, and it's important...
This is a kayak committee now.
And, and we, we jumped ahead to the sewage discussion, and it's, and it's important for everyone to understand what we're talking about, we've got twenty-two point eight million gallons a day of sewage capacity on the ground. We've got twenty-two point eight million gallons a day of sewage capacity on the ground.
Say it again?
Twenty-two point eight million gallons a day of sewage treatment capacity.
That's what we have.
That's what you have.
That's what we have capacity right now.
That's right.
How much of that are we?
The most you've ever used on average is thirteen. Now, P U B is, is valuing the cost of new sewage capacity at five bucks a gallon. That means twenty-two point eight minus thirteen. Anybody? Seven point eight times five, thirty-eight million dollars. Thirty-eight million dollars worth of capacity is not being used. The question that I raised, what I, which I think is reasonable is, why spend another twenty-five million when you got thirty-eight that you're not using?
And you asked that question?
I certainly did, yes, sir.
What?
Uh, I think that we agreed that we would look into it and explore it further, that, uh, I, I raised an issue that they'd already looked at, but would be glad to.
Is that how it was looked at, Mr. O'Malley, when you were?
Originally, yeah. Originally, it was looked at, it was decided based on what I said earlier. We're looking at, you're gonna have growth, growth to the east anyway. So, the south plant's gonna service that new growth eventually. But, the cost of collecting and transporting sewage from the north to the south was too costly. It was not cost effective. That's why it was flipped that way.
But, okay, when you asked that question, Snowden, does that, I mean, it, I understand that. And that answer makes sense to me, but was that what was said last week at the meeting?
No, I didn't get that response. And I, I haven't gotten anything with respect to wastewater engineering that's more recent than, uh, two thousand and two. So, if there was further studies done that supports that, I would certainly like to incorporate those into my documentation. But, the only thing I have on wastewater engineering, capacity, et cetera, dates back to two thousand and two in the water wastewater master plan that was prepared.
Do, do the numbers indicate to you, you said right now, the most we've ever used is thirteen million. Uh, currently, that's the high right now. What's, what's the average right now?
That, sorry, Mr. Mayor, the average is thirteen million gallons a day. Yes, sir.
What's the highest on, on a, on a?
But, I think what you need to take into account, what's the highest from the north end and the highest from the south?
And, and we have that, let's talk about that.
That's, that's a good distinction.
Yes, sir. Um, we, we've got that here in this slide.
Paulie's looking for that real quick. On the twenty-two million doll, uh, twenty-two million gallon additional capacity that we still have, does that mean that we can't charge one nickel of the twenty-five million dollar plant to the, in the impact fee?
It sure does. I don't see any way where you can assess one nickel of the twenty-five million dollars i- as part of the impact fee. And I'll, uh, go through that calculation.
You're talking about statutorily?
Statutorily, absolutely. Based on the capacity per connection. Uh, here's, Mr. Mayor, here's your, the response to your question. Um, here's south wastewater treatment plant with twelve point eight M G D. Here's your average use of that. Anywhere from five point three to five point five over a.
I'm talking, say it again, Jeff?
Thirteen-year period. The south wastewater treatment plant with twelve point eight million gallons a day capacity, you're using between basically five and a half of that on an average basis. Now, the Robindale plant with ten M G D capacity started off at five, went to six in oh-two. And, uh, in oh-five, oh-six, this is the fiscal year, you use seven point one. Now, T C Q, out of ten, yes, sir. Now, T C Q says, and I might not have this exactly right, but I believe T C Q mandates that when you hit seventy percent utilization on an average basis, you must start planning and designing for an expansion. When you hit ninety percent, you must award a contract for that expansion and start constructing.
Have you seen that explaining that?
Stop being.
Well, let's do, let's do some numbers here, and, uh, I'm gonna let you answer that question or anyone else.
We need to stress, Mayor, why we're planning for a new plant because we're at capacity by law that we have to start planning additional capacity.
You have to start planning additional capacity. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to plan for an additional plant.
Of course, you have to get.
And, and, well, let me, let me ask this question. When you, when you add both, you, you add both plants to get your total capacity, and then you add both usage to get your percentage usage. Is that right?
That is right.
Okay.
That's one approach. The other approach, which I saw with San Antonio Water System, is they had the very same issue. And what they elected to do for an impact fee is assess one impact fee at a lower level for any development within a certain diameter of the existing treatment, and then a higher impact fee for development outside of that diameter. That's another approach, but, and I think that addresses the key issue here because you don't have a treatment capacity deficit, you have a conveyance deficit. You added transmission of wastewater deficit. Uh, I wanna answer Mr. Zias' question. This, this comes straight out of the two thousand and six impact fee study. You have, according to that study, your average wastewater E S U requires two hundred and forty-four gallons per day of treatment capacity. You have, per that study, fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight current E S Us, and they forecasted you would add thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-two more over the five years. Gets you to sixty-six thousand and thirty service units times two hundred and forty-four gallons a day. This is multiplication, this isn't high engineering. Equals sixteen million one hundred and eleven thousand gallons of required sewage capa, treatment capacity. You got twenty-two point eight.
But, that's what we're saying, but most of the growth is at the north. So, it's gonna go to the north plant, not the south plant?
I concede the point.
That's engineering.
I concede the point, Commissioner. And, uh, to the extent that you elect to resolve a, a conveyance issue with treatment, you can certainly do that, but it would, it would, you would certainly wanna look at a zoned impact fee because you can't assess.
That's what we should've paid the study for, or zonal, like what he wanted.
I have a question of P U B. Why did we oversize the southmost plant and how did we finance it?
The southmost plant was oversized because it needed to be oversized. I mean.
When was, when was?
I know that, I think that it was done in two phases. The last phase was completed in nineteen ninety-nine. Now, I also know, the first phase, I'm not sure. I, I know that it was, uh, Jeff, you may have because you've looked at the data. I, I, it was increased to twelve point eight from what I believe around eight? I think it had like four or five million gallons of treatment capacity added to it. Because it was.
And that was added in ninety-nine?
The, the final phase was done in ninety-nine. Now, how it was, how it was financed? I know that there was, I think there was a Water Development Board loan in that because I think, uh, or s- some kind of a loan a- as well as some debt issue to finance the balance of that. So, uh, it, it, it did have a combination of, of, of revenue. But, in both cases, it was debt because if it's a loan versus, you know, bond, it's still debt.
And right now, it's great for us because, one, it would be too cautious to be related with it. And if future growth like southmost was exploding, we can need that growth.
Well, the thing with, the thing with that plant is that that's it. You can't do anything else with it.
And what about the north plant?
Now, the north plant, I, I, I can't address, uh, when it was built or, or whether it's even had an, uh, uh, an extension because I just simply don't have the institutional knowledge. I, I do know that, uh, that's a ten million gallon plant as, as stated. And the rate of growth on the north is, uh, much more accelerated than it is at the south plant. Uh, you, yes, you do have combined capacity. And, and let me just make one comment to, to Jeff's point about, uh, the last kayak meeting. Uh, while the discussions about how we got from, uh, from expansion or diverting flows to the south to a new plant wasn't discussed in detail, it was discussed. And in fact, um, when the kayak first began to look at the capital improvement plan presented by P U B, the first element of that scenario was to divert flows to the south treatment plant. And we looked at projects. Uh, the second scenario was to actually look at expanding the north treatment plant. As a res, and then really, the final scenario was to look at building a new plant. Now, all that discussion went into finally arriving at a decision to, let's build a new plant. So, i- i- you can't just say that it was never looked at or it was never discussed because it was. Uh, e- essentially, it, it began by, by looking at all of those scenarios. What I recall was that when we began to look at diverting those flows, I mean, you've got some pretty long distances from the north and where that incremental growth is, is rapidly occurring to the south plant, you were looking at some pretty major capital projects to the tune of twenty to twenty-five million if you did that.
Instead of building a plant?
Instead of building, or even instead of expanding. Because even if you expanded, you were still gonna have to divert flows to, 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 to meet that. Uh, so, I mean, all those scenarios were looked at. Uh, what, what didn't happen at the last kayak meeting was they certainly were not looked at in detail. I mean, I, I think, i- if you're going to begin to change the assumptions under which the initial study was done, you're gonna have to go back and look at how those assumptions will affect the calculation of a new maximum allowable. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but if you begin to do that, if you, if you change the assumptions in the land use, if you change the C I P, then you have new numbers. You still have to go through the process of determining what the new maximum allowable is. That mayor may not solve your problem about whether it's going to be three thousand or five thousand. You may find out that it's gonna go up. You know, the issue is, you're still gonna have to set that fee at some point. We know that since we presented this, uh, study and all of the discussion, there has even been a new element added to it. We've been told by our board, just as we've been told by the city commission, is that no C I P is going to have any kind of debt that requires rates. Well, then, you're gonna have to look at your new C I P because you're not gonna have a hundred and thirty-eight million or a hundred and thirty-five or possibly even a hundred and twenty. You may only have sixty million dollars to work with. So, you're gonna have to redo the C I P. If you begin to look, even if you change the growth from five to four incrementally, Mayor, it wasn't based on five thousand E S Us per year, it's more like anywhere from twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred E S Us per year over that five-year period.
The, the only point I wanna make on that is that we have not experienced that growth in the past, and we're not close to it now. That's why I have, I have real concerns with that projection.
Uh, you, you, on average, it's been four. You've had some years when it's been lower, you've had some years when it's over. Your E S U conversion at some points may have been eighteen hundred, at other points, it may have been twenty-eight hundred. A- all we're saying, all I'm saying is that if you begin to change those, then you're gonna have to go back and look at it. Also, you know, th- there, there is the issue of credit. And, and we haven't had a chance to really sit down and agree or to, to look at how Jeff's interpretation uh, with, with Black and Beach's interpretation. Plus, Jeff's introduced some new elements to it that we did not include in that. And that is, you can include the cost of debt if you're going to recover that as part of impact fees. We didn't. You can also go back and possibly include some recovery of some past capital improvements that you've made. And if I'm hearing you correctly, some of those may be eligible for impact fee recovery, which we did not do. So, if you're going to change the landscape or the assumptions, you're gonna have to go back and redo this. And what you get back may not be the maximum allowable that you're looking for. It will put you in the same dilemma. You're still gonna have to decide whether you set, where between zero and what that maximum allowable number is, you're going to set the impact fee. And the, the last thing I'd like to say is that we are not implementing the C I P as adopted by the kayak or the city commission or our board simply because we don't have the financing to implement it. So, we're not moving on those projects, Jeff. And that's real simple. We don't have the money, we're not gonna do them.
So, does that hurt growth? Eddie, and I.
At this point, it hasn't because those, a lot of those projects were gonna be, you know, in year two and three and four and five. And at this point, you know, we're dealing with what we've got on the table.
Eventually, it will.
Looking at that incremental growth in the future. That's why I think we all agree that this process needs to be concluded and we need to move quickly because you are gonna have to deal with that growth, whether it's over the next five years or the next ten years, and have some anticipation of what projects and how you're gonna fund them.
Eddie, are you saying that you don't plan to, someone to tell me, do this, do that, improvement, every time?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get your question.
What is the percentage on that sixteen million?
We're, we're not going, we're not executing on that C I P because we don't have the resources to execute it. And then, and the, because, you know.
It would make, it would make seventy percent.
So, that was one of the C I Ps that you're not having here.
Well, well, again, if, if, you know, there's a big difference between, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna execute a plan based on you're gonna recover, you know, two thousand dollars worth of, 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 of impact fee versus one that you're recovering two eighty, it's gonna have a substantial difference of how much you can be able to do. Especially if you add the scenario that don't come to us with something that says, "We gotta go out and borrow money that has an impact on rates because we're not gonna approve it." So, how are you gonna do it?
You kill growth, the rest, and that's just you kill growth. Because you can't handle the sewage, you can't provide the water treatment.
And I think the important thing here, that this commission, at least myself, is, that I'm trying to do is not raise the rates and, and we can work with a rate neutral.
That's already given.
Rate neutral number. That's real important. Rick, what was your question? Because I didn't hear you. Do you, you wanna get to the mic? Can you go to the mic?
Go to the mic.
Mike? Rick?
Go to the mic.
Not Mike.
Get the answer again, it was a good answer. Eddie had a good answer.
I needed a clarification. Is, is it P U B's, uh, position is that they don't plan to execute, execute on a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar C I P?
Not at the present time, no.
Okay. And if they don't plan to do that, then how, we as an, we as a kayak are trying to get to a number of an impact fee, right? The three thousand ninety is dependent on a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar C I P, right? So, in other words, we have to know what P U B plans to execute on in order for us to tell the commission, "Okay, this is what we think the impact fee should be." Because you would agree with me that we have to have that ultimate C I P number in order to come up with an impact fee that would be attributable to that, right?
And, and my comment to that was, if you're gonna begin to change the assumptions, yes, I would agree that you really need to do the C I P again as well as you need to do the land use assumptions. Excuse me. Uh, the, the other, the other point too is that, um, well, you know, because of the variables have changed. So, consequently, it, it's not constant anymore. Now, three ninety-five is pretty clear on how you go about it. You know, one of the things I wanna make clear is that it isn't the kayak's responsibility to do the C I P. You know, it's the P U B's responsibility to do the C I P. We bring it to you. You have the opportunity to question it. You have the opportunity to, you know, ask for info. And you have the opportunity to, you know, make whatever written comments you wish to forward to the city commission as it relates to the C I P. But, it's not Jeff's job or it isn't your job to do the C I P. That's P U B's job.
Well, the, the commission asked us to come up with a number that we need for the impact fee. Just to get that, you know, and, and are these in range or how is this looking? But, we don't know what your, of your executed plan or your set, your goals and objectives.
Well, I think what we're hearing today from Jeff, and I think, and I would agree that you do have to go back and relook at it because you are changing to some degree the landscape on it. You, you've come up with some things that are not included. You've also had him raise some questions that are included. Uh, you've also changed the growth projections. You've also suggested other things. I mean, if you're going to look at zonal rates and so forth, you know, you be, you begin to kinda almost talk about redoing the process. And so, if, 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 if we're gonna have to redo that, you're not in a position to recommend, I believe. But, my understanding of what he was supposed to give you is some semblance of what a number could be that might not have a negative impact on growth. Not what the impact fee number or the maximum allowable should be. Again, if, if you change those scenarios, you may come back and find out that the maximum allowable number is gonna go up.
I, I agree with.
It is gonna go up.
I agree with your statement, Mr. Campidono, and, and I have to disagree with something you said earlier. And I, I, I'm hesitant because I've got great respect and admiration for you and P U B as a whole. But, um, with respect to your earlier comment that the original figure did not include historical sunk costs, it did, both for water and wastewater. That, that was a big component of the three thousand and ninety. And, uh.
I don't recall, repeat that again, please?
The, uh, original study did incorporate.
The Black and Beach study.
Did incorporate the recovery of a historical sunk cost for infrastructure already in place, not just new stuff. It was part of their calculation.
No, no, well, part of it.
Right. Definitely part of it, but it.
The, the other part on the financing part was not included.
And, correct, absolutely correct. The other, the other observation I wanna make is, is, is key, and I think Rick hit this on the head. As we go through this process, uh, there was a discussion about what, what is economist dot com doing? What did they get hired to do? Our scope was very clear. Uh, we were asked to review land use assumptions, then the capital improvement plan, then recommend a fee based net of a credit, and then talk about economic implications. We always started from scratch. We, we, we're always clear that we're not here to critique an existing study. We're gonna start from scratch and do it the way we always do our studies, from scratch. And, and that's what we've done. And I've, I've said this before, we're about eighty percent done. So, we're not, when you talk about starting over, we started over about three months ago. And we're close. All we need to do is get over the hump, get the last bit of data, and then give you guys a number to work with that I think that the majority of the players can agree to.
Well, I, I think it's fair to say that P U B would like the opportunity to review and digest your study before you tell us what our number is. And we just got it, sought for the last first time, uh, on Monday. So, that's what we're doing, going through that process.
Eddie, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a cheap shot at you. Just please don't ask for another study after this study. A study of this study because.
What, what I'm talking about is that you, you have to, you, you, there is a way of recalculating what the maximum allowable is. That's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about reinventing it all over again. But, if you make some assumption changes, then your original assumptions are no longer valid. And so consequently, the denominators or the numerators that go into the formula change and you just run it again and say, okay, here is what your new maximum allowable is, based on these assumptions that you now have made. That's all I'm saying. I'm not by any means suggesting that we need to start all over and, and, and be from the beginning. Uh, but, but, but there, if, if you do change those, then you, you, you do, or it's my opinion that you would recalculate the maximum allowable and, 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 and that will change.
Eddie, and I think you and I are in the same boat's worst. Statistically, you and I know both that that number will come back higher.
It, well, you, you don't know. I said, I said it's conceivable. You'd have to go through the process of looking at it to, to determine whether it will be higher or not. It depends on the assumptions.
Commissioner, I'll say that a lot of that depends on the historical costs, what you originally paid for a lot of your excess capacity, net of depreciation, net of grants, and net of-
Debt, debt, debt?
No, sir. Net of depreciation, net of grants, and net of contributions and aid of construction. And that's where you get to the amount that you can then allocate to growth versus existing. And we're, and I'm, and again, I'm going to say, we're about eighty percent there. We did start over, but that was three months ago.
When, when Economist.com comes back with that number, we will be, we will-
It's not their job, your job is to tell us the growth of what it's going to affect if we raise the impact fee. You need the number from us before you can say what it's going to do to growth. You're not, his job is not to tell us what the growth, what the number should be at, Carlos?
No, not what it should be at. Provide information?
Information.
What would it do to our economy?
That information is going to include number or numbers. This is what it could mean, this is what it could do, this is what it could not. That's what it's supposed to do.
The, the way the law reads, it's my job to provide you with the maximum fee, net of the credit, and then talk about the implications of implement, of implementing that fee. This, this body then provides written comments to the commission to act on.
Okay, hold, hold on. Mr. Bernard's been standing up.
Yes.
Jeff covered part of what I was going to comment on related to what the scope of work is and what we're hoping to get from him. One of the things I want to keep in, in front of us is the amount of CIP that we are currently have in place that creates the three thousand and ninety dollars does not solve the problems of the rate payer having to have, deal with an increased rate. We will have an increased rate because that's, right now, that's the way we're planning on dealing with it.
Well, that's not what this city commission is asking you to do. This city commission is asking this kayak to go get us a number, go get us a figure where we don't have to raise the rate. I don't want to raise the rate. As a city commissioner, sitting up here and as a, a person that appoints people to the kayak, I'm looking for a number. This is me. I'm not, I'm not going to speak to the rest of the city commission.
I, I'm saying that based on what we understand the law is, three thousand and ninety still, if you went to the maximum-
It's still not enough.
It's not enough.
Correct.
I'm saying that there are alternatives that I'm hoping that we'll get into after we've clarified and fine tuned the numbers, make sure that we don't need to recreate the wheel on the study, that then we want to talk to you about some other pub, public finance alternatives that nobody's wanted to talk about in this whole group so far. And so what I'm asking you to do is let us fine tune, let us finish this part of the analysis to understand, is that number real? Did they forget some big things like life cycle of cost of, of, of operating a new twenty-five million dollar plant? Those kinds of things, we didn't talk about through the times of study with the, uh, with, uh, going through the process. So what I'm asking you to do is let us, uh, encouraging us to get through what Jeff has brought into the table for us, that will give us all better information. And then I want to talk about some alternative public finance vehicles. Thank you.
You know, a lot of this stuff was, was, was part of the process we went through. Mostly we were not privy to it, but Mrs. Greer and Chairman Vella and Mr. Bernard were. We talked about zonal rates. I mean, it's something, it's like, it's not like we didn't talk about it. We talked about it and debated it. In fact, I'm the one that proposed zonal rates, a lower rate for urban than, than new growth. And it was rejected. That's the process, okay? That was, made a decision and we moved on. We also talked about ESUs, and I'm the one that pointed out that they were too optimistic. And the response was that if we lower the ESUs, the impact fee is going to go up, it's going to be more costly. But we also talked, as a committee, as a committee, we discussed it. We also talked-
You keep, you keep saying that you did this and somebody else did that, but nobody-
No, no, as a committee, we discussed it. And I raised the issue about, Leanne, am I wrong? About the, about the zonal rates?
When was that, Mr. Mah?
In the kayak.
We, we, the kayak, we, you charged us to do the job.
Yeah.
Okay? And we, as a committee, we have a right to ask questions, like Mr. Capriano said, and proposal alternatives. And we're ignorant of a lot of things. We came in there not knowing, like some of our new members.
That would have been a great idea. The first time I heard of it was when Mayor Trevino brought that up.
But, 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 but it was open to the public, you were welcome to come, okay?
Yeah, you get-
Ms. Greer, am I wrong? Did I not raise the zonal rates?
I never heard that.
Okay. We also raised the debt. We also raised the debt. So those things were, were taken into account. And, you know, I think, uh, the charge was after we met, after we met, okay? It was very specific, no rate increases. Is that right, Leanne? Okay. No rate increases from this body. I think it was unanimous. So and then, the, 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 the decision has to be made, how much growth do we want? If we're going to have no rate increases, and then how are we going to pay for that growth? And it's got to be a balance of rate payers and developers to keep the rates down. So if you gave us, and I said, I got up here and I said it several times, if you give us five hundred dollars as an impact fee or a thousand dollars or whatever number you give us, then we decide how much we're going to grow, how much we're going to build capital improvements. And I think that's what we need. We need the number to decide, hey, we don't want a hundred and twenty-five million, twenty-four million. We want thirty million, based on that number. Because that number's going to tell us how much growth we're going to allow and how much, how are we going to keep the rates from going up? I think that's, that's the answer. Give us a number. And I don't think this is going to solve the problem because unless you want kill growth, you say, don't do the capital improvements or do a portion of it, and you'll kill a portion of the growth.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I want to disagree with Mr. Armada's comments regarding the kayak's, uh, discussion of increasing rates or lowering rates. We, we, that's not what we were there for. The kayak has a very specific charge. And it has nothing to do with, with are we going to be able to lower rates because of the impact fee or raise rates? That's what he just got through saying. We didn't discuss that because that's not the charge that this committee has.
The commission statement, not us. The commission is the body statement.
Okay, all right, all right. Mr. Armada, you, you made-
We already met as a committee and we made the recommendations. And there was a recommendation. We didn't say this rate.
No, wait a minute. You did not make a recommendation. You did not make a recommendation.
No, no recommendations were made.
The kayak made a calculation.
That's right.
Do we agree on that?
You keep using the word recommendation, Mr. Armada. The three thousand and ninety dollar figure was not a recommendation from Black and Beach and it was not a recommendation from the kayak to the city commission. And yet, you continue to use the word recommendation. And I wish you would stop doing that because that is not what has happened. You are misinforming the public when you use the word recommendation.
Did y'all sign off on it?
Mr. Armada, hold on a second.
Did you sign off on it?
I, I think we agree.
Did you sign off on it or not? Hey, did you sign off on it?
If you remember, Mayor, I, I signed in.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes, you did, David. You signed off on it. I think he's taking it personally.
Was it, well, regardless, was it a calculation or was it a recommendation?
It was a calculation.
Okay, that's, that's-
The body, the body did not recommend, did not recommend, okay? But we sent-
Mr. Armada, look.
Let's go to page eight.
No, we'll go back to Mr. Snowden's, uh, presentation. Does anybody order pizza?
He says pepperoni and cheese.
No, we're good, we're good. Everybody calm down, including me, so everybody, we need to get through this information. The whole point of this is to get information. And you know what? If the number comes back and it's, it's larger and you recommend that, I'm going to feel a lot better about it. I don't care what the number is, to be honest with you. I want to make sure that it's a well-based, informed decision so that we do not make a mistake.
That we know the implications.
And if you say, Mr. Snowden, based upon your experience, based upon your calculations, you know what? The number, including debt, ought to be five thousand? And that's a number that you don't think is going to hurt growth? I know I'm going to feel better about it. At least, the commission should also. And if it's two thousand or one, whatever that number is, let's get all the information to make an informed decision. It's not to help or hinder, it's just to make sure that we do not kill growth, but we do it in the right way. And guess what? We're going to make somebody upset, whatever number it is. We're used to that. All right, go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, sir. Um, just in terms of quickly trends in national impact fees, uh, you can see that they're, they are used increasingly nationwide to help recover the cost of growth. Uh, this next slide shows, uh, national impact fee averages, selected cities in the state of Texas that are non-valley entities, and then valley averages. And what you can see is the valley is starting to implement impact fees. They're certainly behind the state average, but they are escalating. And, uh, it's, it's understandable when you, when you look at the rates of growth in the valley and on the border as a region.
So, uh, real quick.
Hold on a second. I should have said this a minute ago. We've been having, up until a few minutes ago, we're having a fair discussion. If somebody wants to ask a question, I'll recognize you and I'll do it. Otherwise, we're going to continue to be running over everybody. You have a question, Commissioner? All right, go ahead.
Well, two thousand six, it says the ni, national average is five thousand two hundred fifty-nine.
Yes, sir.
The state of Texas average is three thousand sixty.
That's, uh, the non-valley entity average.
Well, yeah. But if you compare us to the valley average, which is nine eighty-three, you're comparing Brownsville to La Guia, little, little cities. We're like a corporate city, like the ones up on top that are all paying five, four, three thousand dollar impact fees. You know, when we recommended twenty-one thirty-three, I think, uh, solid oil hit it right on the head. No, and we got there. But, you know, if it wasn't for Commissioner Adonis who resented it back to two eighty, which is costing, hold on, let me finish. Because it did happen. It did happen.
This commission acts as a body, okay? Whether you want to accept it or not, don't take any more cheap shots. This is not a political forum. This is our business as a governmental entity.
The thing is, and I talked to him and he makes it again.
Do you understand the difference, sir?
No, maybe I don't.
I know you don't. That's why I have to keep bringing you, your attention to it. Now, please, your question is what?
Why we still have it at two eighty when the rest of the state and the nation are at five thousand dollars?
That's what we're working on.
That's my question.
Because we haven't looked at this for sixteen years.
It was looked at, two thousand five, was looked at in nineteen ninety. Don't say that. We've been looking in two thousand six, too.
All right. Yes, sir.
I was privy to this before Mr. Stone.
Okay, Pat, I'm sorry.
You gotta talk on the mic, man.
In all fairness, it, it's important for purpose of clarity because if not, it gets confusing. Some of these rates don't take into account fees that are not, not called impact fees. Is that right, Mr. Snowden?
That's right, Mr. Armada.
So I mean, just because you see a table there with a figure, that doesn't mean that that's the impact fee because they call them something else. But he's right, as far as comparable cities, some are smaller and their growth is different and their capital improvements is different. So what drives the rate is the amount of growth and the amount of capital improvements. That's what drives the rate.
Let's try to let Mr. Snowden get through as much of this presentation.
Yes, sir.
Because I know I want to get home before breakfast.
Okay. And, uh, we could have screened it by population size, but we chose to narrow the focus on border communities just to show that, uh, the implementation of impact fees has not kept pace with the rest of the state. But it, it certainly is increasing and we, we forecasted it will. And for example, in low income communities in Arizona, we've got combined impact fees of forty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred dollars, so. California is way, yeah, of course, there's not many. Yeah. You can see how they skew the average. Uh, on the land use assumptions, I'm running through this. Uh, this is nineteen eighty-nine recorded land uses, uh, which we looked at. You've got ninety-seven thousand acres in the P U B service area. We don't forecast where you, where you will consume all of that acreage in the near future, so that's not a big issue. Um, we have some bullets here that indicate what a fully developed land use plan would provide to you. And, uh, I'm moving on from there because I want to get to the capital improvement plan. It's the single most important element of an impact fee study. And if we are revising downward the hundred and thirty-four million dollars that's been filed of record, then certainly by three ninety-five, the three thousand and ninety dollar maximum impact fee goes away because that's the quotient and the numerator has changed. So I want to make, get that clear. But remember again, that once impact fees fund some or all of construction costs, rate revenue pays for the operations. Thus, to the extent that you choose to overbuild, rate payers will bear the long-term financial burden. And it is critical for all the parties to reach consensus on the required CIP. How do you design a capital improvement plan? Per chapter three ninety-five. Well, they talk about it in detail. You identify the facility expansions for which impact fees may be assessed. You describe each capital improvement and the cost of each one. You analyze the total current capacity and level of usage. You describe capital improvements necessitated by attributable to new development. You include a table establishing current uses per unit charge for, for each category of capital improvement. You forecast out the number of service units and you include a plan for awarding a fee. Now, I'm going to jump off for a minute because I'm really trying to get after this data. What specifically, when I look at your system, what's your current capacity? What do you propose to build? A line item that says expand twenty-two lift stations doesn't tell me what I need to know to incorporate that in impact fee. I need to, need to know how many, what the total capacity of those lift stations are today and how much they will be post-improvement in order to incorporate them in the fee.
Basically, you have to go back to P U B, right? And get information from them.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, sir. Uh, and here's some excerpts from the one y'all did in nineteen ninety. Now, this is kind of hard to read. But every, all, every bit of detail I'm asking for now was asked of P U B in nineteen ninety and supplied to the contractor. I'm asking for the same thing. This is in your nineteen ninety RW Beck study. No. Based on the way that Economist.com does an impact fee, which is consistent with three ninety-five and with your nineteen ninety contract, or yes? I'm not going to stand up here and say that the national firm didn't do it correctly. I, I don't really know. I think it might have a lot to do with the disclaimer on page two of their study. I don't, I couldn't tell you, it's a full page and it's basically, it's, we got a lot of our data from P U B. Uh, but anyway, this is what I'm looking for, this stuff. And then here's another thing, lift stations. What's your current capacity, your lift stations? How much are you going to add to it? Well, we don't know. Well, here, here's nineteen, here's two thousand and two lift station inventory. There's ninety-five lift stations here and they give you the gallon per minute of every one of them, rated horsepower, et cetera. That's what I'm looking for to complete this study. And there's no mystery. It was compiled in two thousand and two, I'm sure it can be compiled now. That's what we need. There's more on the impact, on the capital improvement plan, but I'm going to move on. This is your CIP for water, which we just discussed, and it looks like some of this will be eliminated. Uh, but at this point in time, there is a thirty million dollar CIP for water, of which twenty-six point seven was for transmission and distribution lines. All of that came from a two thousand and two Turner Collin Braden study, which was updated periodically, most recently November of two thousand and six. And the big thing to, to consider on those updates is that those figures for, for consumption and flow were based on characteristics demonstrated in the P U B system in the late nineties and early nineties. Since that time period, you've had consumption demand drop by thirty percent. People don't get billed for twelve thousand gallons a month anymore in the system. They get billed for eight thousand gallons. They use a lot less water than they did ten years ago. And when you're going to plan out future capacity, three ninety-five states, you got to use current trends, not trends that are fifteen years old. And that's really going to be the basis for a lot of the over-capacity statements that I make going forward and the, and the basis for the fact that a lot of the capacity you've got on the ground, that the rate payers are already paying for, you can recover through an impact fee and not have to build more stuff and operate, maintain it at the expense of rate payers. I'm going to go on. Wastewater, again, fifty-three million dollars, of which twenty-five million is treatment, that's the plant, twenty-eight million is pumping, those are the lift stations. And here's the description of the lift stations. Lift station number four, Boca Chica, new North Brownsville lift station, reroute, pump replacement, et cetera. No mention of current capacity or capacity when they get done with these improvements, got to have it. We talk about service units. This is your water connection and ESU history. You can see here that, I'm going to jump to the punchline, you've grown. By about four percent.
Pointing out the plant, I mean, the project, um...
Okay. Let me jump ahead here. What slide number was that?
Seventeen.
Great. Okay. This is your history from nineteen ninety to February two thousand seven of new service units. Both connections and new service, you see the difference, you got forty-seven thousand connections versus, uh, fifty-two thousand service units? That's basically, if you apply an inflator of twenty percent, you go from connection to service units, that's the difference, more or less. So, if you look at the history of the system, you've grown by, on average, four percent per annum over the last seventeen years, some years a little lower, some a little higher. For planning purposes, four percent seems like a reasonable number, same story on the wastewater. You've added about new connections and E S U's at a rate of about four percent per annum. Looking at your history of water intake, production and sales, this is what I alluded to earlier. If you look at treated water, look at nineteen ninety-two and ninety-three, let me see here, I'm gonna do a pointer. Nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, your average connection needed six hundred and twenty-six gallons a day of treated water capacity. Fast forward to this la- of October of oh-six, that was down to four hundred and thirty-two gallons a day. That's a thirty-one percent decline in consumption. Why? Well, I think there's several reasons, higher efficient appliances and fixtures and rates, price elasticity of water demand, the more you charge, the less people use. People have adjusted their consumption downward tremendously, and if you look at where they're at now, they're, they come in right at eight thousand gallons. And that's right under the nine thousand gallon level where the rate increases really jump. So, people have reacted to the rate increases and, uh, it's, uh, justifiable. And you need to plan according to today's consumption trends and not trends that were prevalent ten years ago. You can see that this trend's also borne out not only in, in the treated water, but in the raw water taken into the plant and the wa- the amount of sales, the revenue collected. Same story on the wastewater treatment and billing history, I jumped to this slide earlier cuz this addresses the whole notion of, uh, max capacity at the South Plant versus Robindale. And, uh, you can see here again, I've only got four years' data here, but, uh, in ninety, in two thousand and three, on average, you needed four hundred and six gallons per day of sewage treatment capacity, that's decline of three hundred and nineteen in the most recent fiscal year. So, the same issue applied to the wastewater, people, because of higher rates, I believe, uh, have adjusted consumption. And by the way, when you see that it applies equally to wastewater, that means they've not only adjusted consumption for irrigation purposes, cuz that water never hits sewage. A lot of it occurs, has occurred indoors.
So, one, one could argue that people are bathing less and going to the restroom less, or holding it longer, I mean, arguably, that's.
Or fixing leaky toilets.
There you go.
Putting, uh, aerating faucet heads on, yes sir.
Not going as often.
Yeah, low flow, low, uh, one point six gallon per flush toilets, absolutely. Th- this is your history of rate increases and the, the main thing to observe is that, once you get over nine thousand gallons, that's where the severity of the rate increases have really hit, and that's why people have adjusted and they're consuming eight. On the rate his- on the revenue history, you see about an eight and a half percent increase. You went from two thousand one collecting twenty-seven point two million in rate revenue to collecting almost forty-one in the most recent fiscal year. So, you certainly, even though you've had declining consumption, the effect of the rate increases and new accounts adding at four percent a year has resulted in, uh, about a nine percent per annum growth in revenues. Strong system, strong revenue growth, is how we classify it. This is a big summary of your debt, the main thing to remember, to focus on here is that you got a hundred and thirty-one million dollars of total water and wastewater debt, this includes the Southmost debt. The next slide shows your annual debt service, this is very hard to read, but the point I wanna make here is, for the next twelve years, your debt service is gonna be between nine point six and ten million dollars a year. You don't have any year, any timeframe up in the near future where you're gonna wipe out debt and free up a bunch of cash flow. You've got a pretty fixed debt service horizon for the next twelve years, so. When we start looking at C I P funding and trying to be rate neutral with our current rate payers, we can't count on the liquidation of a big chunk of debt in the next twelve years. And that's something that you wanna incorporate in your decision process.
Go ahead, Mike, repeat step to, Mike step to the mic.
I guess the, the question I have there is, is the following, uh, on that South, uh, South Plant, uh, the debt that we have is incurred by overbuilding? That's my question, is, is the debt incurred by overbuilding and, and, uh, because I noticed on the other slide that you had on, and I'm gonna go back to that page, uh, on page twenty-two, uh, it shows that we're about forty-five percent capacity to the size of that plant. But then you show us a slide of the debt, and our debt is high, is it due to that?
Uh, I couldn't, I couldn't answer the question, I think that.
This is just the total of all the.
Yeah, it, it depends on the spec- the financing specific to the twelve point eight M G D at the South Plant, which I'm not aware of. I, I'm not sure how much of that was cash funded versus debt. But certainly, your current level of outstanding debt directly correlates to the amount of overcapacity on the system.
I, I think, in, in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, up until recently, all P U B debt was, uh, there was no, uh, it was a hundred percent. Leandro? Up until about two years ago, all debt that we were borrowing was a hun- at a hundred percent. Well, no, yeah, no, no, that's, that's right, no, no, that's right, that's right, that's right. No, that's, that's not right, that's not right, I'm confusing you, forget it, strike that.
So, real quick Jeff, for this, this, uh, this chart.
Which one?
This one, we're looking at up there. Cuz I can't really read the, would you say besides Los Fresos, Realondo, Brownsville pays the highest water, wastewater rates?
For five thousand gallons of consumption, Mr. Atkins, Commissioner Atkins, that's correct, it's also the case at ten thousand gallons in the next slide.
Wow.
Uh, it's also, when you look at commercial consumption rates, or rate levels, um, you can see that you're toward the highest third, uh, quartile.
And that's be- but that's, that's above the state of Texas average, right? Yes.
You're just below on this, with this example.
On the first two, the five thousand and the ten thousand, which everybody normally uses about ten thousand.
Yeah.
We are higher than the state average, right?
Yeah, McAllen, by the way.
Yes sir.
And, uh, McAl- McAllen, Mr. Mata is the li- is the lowest on the rung here.
Wow.
So, there. Well, on the fifty thou- okay, you want me to go back to the, uh, okay. About thirty-five, yes sir. Yes sir, and on the. And it's the same, same issue at two hundred thousand gallons of your, of your higher demand commercial, they're paying a rate that's toward the higher end of the spectrum, so. What, what I, just to summarize then, you're generating strong cash flows and you've got rates that are higher relative to the peer group. And you've got growth, so you've got a lot of things that support a healthy system. One of the things raised was, uh, how do our rates compare when we look at median household income, our incomes are lower here. Well, we looked at that too and filtered that in, what are your average rates as a, as a percentage of median household income? Same story, you're toward the higher end of the rung, your rate payers for ten thousand gallons pay it right at two point nine percent of median household income for water and wastewater. Now, that's interesting because when you get over three percent, that's when EPA and American Water Works say those rates are burdensome, let's kick in grant money. So, for planning purposes, you wanna keep that in mind as well. Yes sir.
If I may?
Yes sir, oh, I'm sorry.
Just to, just to, again, to understand this a little better, these rates are also fueled by O N M, operations and maintenance.
Oh, absolutely, yes sir.
So, i- it's not just because of rate heights, cuz we wanna raise rate heights, it's operations and maintenance that drive this also.
Yes, um, that's correct.
But you're gonna have that anywhere.
Point taken, but if we do, if we do expand, we will have more than what we have now. Exactly.
Yes sir, well, I calculate they'd go up about eleven bucks from the sixty-five to about seventy-six to seventy-seven. Yes sir.
Mr. Mayor, in all fairness again, uh, all this could go out the window, because as the mayor is well aware of.
But if it goes out the window, three thousand ninety goes with it, right?
Let me explain, let me explain. We're looking at, at building a twenty million gallon per day desal plant and we're looking and working on the weird dam, right, Mr. Mayor? So, that will have a positive impact on our rates here. So, I mean, all these projections, and they're just projections, okay, because we don't know what's gonna happen and how soon we're gonna build a desal plant, depending on state funding, there are factors that we're not in control of. But again, it goes back to what, as a body, elected body in the kayak committee, working, okay, with P U B and everybody else to adjust the rate depending on the cost. So, those are positive things that could happen that would re- bring the rates down.
I don't know how you could construct a de- uh, seawater desal plant and have lower rates.
Well, no, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting funding from, from, from the state, and we can sell, we can sell water to other entities, which will bring revenues. So, I mean, you know, those are things you're not privy to, okay, so, I mean, this study.
Well, that, that's true, but that wouldn't.
But I, I'm just saying, you know, for the purpose of discussion, those things could have a positive impact.
But as of today, you're the third highest in water rates.
Jeff. Jeff, I had one question.
Yes sir.
A while back, well, not a while back, but Mr. Gotts and I had a discussion, we talked about waste at P U B, and, and he's alluded to the fact on the operation, maintenance and operation. Have you seen our operation, our maintenance operation P U B, and are things that, are there ways and, and, uh, to do things better, to minimize the cost of M and O, maintenance and operation at P U B? Are we efficient, are we operating efficiently, or can we reduce some of that? Are there better mechanisms to do things better at P U B, to lower that?
I appreciate the, the question, Commissioner, I wasn't engaged to do a management study or an audit of any, of, uh.
I think I can answer that.
But, uh, and I, I appreciate the question, but I haven't come at it from that angle at all, that's really not even part of our repertoire. We do impact fees and rates, but we don't do management studies.
I guess I'm just focusing on, when we talked about maintenance and operation, we say, this is a cost. I guess we need to also look at, at one point, how, how are we doing it in-house, how are we actually providing that and, and, and coming up with that number, whatever that number is? So, I, I mean, and I know, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, that's not your, your, uh, objective here, but I guess that's, that's something when we talked about waste.
Commissioner, it isn't, it's not part of my engagement, but I think that you would benefit from reviewing the management study performed recently for P U B, which, uh, I'm sure you could access.
Correct.
If, at your request, and that would probably address some of those questions. Yes sir.
Thank you.
So, what we did, we, we talked about how to grow, what kind of scenarios we're gonna look at, and we ended up providing four. The low end is Water Development Board, they forecast you're gonna grow at two percent a year. The remaining three are the low, average and high, based on the seventeen years' history we looked at. I'm gonna, I'm going to focus on the average, which is four percent per annum, same for wastewater. The next step is to look at what you have on the ground currently. You got, I'm gonna skip supply, cuz that's addressed through the collection of water rights fees. Treatment capacity, you've got forty-six point nine seven, that's your share of Southmost plus your two forty, two twenties. Pumping, this is an estimate, I really need to tighten this up with a group, seventy-five point five million gallons a day of high service pumping capacity. Ground storage, thirteen point three, I know that needs to be updated, that comes from an official statement in two thousand and five. Elevated storage is five point five, I was watching you guys on public access the other night and I know that, no, no, you guys, you guys, and, uh, y'all were awarding a contract for new two M G D elevated storage plant, so that's being recog- I need to update my numbers to, to, uh, resolve that. Transmission, I've got forty M G D, that I would certainly wanna work with Turner Colley and Braden and tighten up. And we certainly wanna net out any, any free money. Then we look in, the capacity requirements are basically, what do you have now, what do you forecast to need over the next ten years? Do you have enough to accommodate it, if you don't, what do you need and then what does it cost? That defines how much we really need to bill versus how much we need to look to and what you already have on the ground. And as we discussed earlier, to the extent that you can focus on what you already have on the ground, you negate new O N M and you protect your rate payers from increases. So, treatment. To the extent that you're able to use your existing capacity to address the needs of growth, you don't bring new debt on the system and you don't bring new operation and maintenance cost on the system. And by not bringing those costs on the system, you don't ask your rate payers to pay more to operate and maintain things you don't need, because they're already operating and maintaining what you've got on the ground today. In this example, you don't need any treatment capacity for the next ten years, except for the most aggressive growth scenario. Pumping, I don't show where you need any pumping capacity over the next ten years. Ground storage, I show where you do need some. And by the way, this is, there was no additional ground storage addressed in the C I P. So, the whole notion that I'm trying to cut things out of the C I P, this contradicts that, this is something that wasn't in the C I P that I'm saying you need.
And how, how big of an impact does that have, this have?
What savings, what savings would that bring us?
We need a cost, if we, we can figure out what it would cost to add six million gallons of ground storage, I can tell you what the impact would be, but that's, that's the missing link.
The wood.
You requested that information?
No sir, that's, that'd be the next step. Elevated storage, I show y'all, you're gonna need about four more. So, for about four million gallons more of elevated storage, which probably gonna be two point two, cuz y'all are in the process of, uh, adding two million gallons. Transmission, this is the big one, these are all the water mains that you're proposing to build, I show that you need about five and a half M G D of those. This, in summary, supply and pumping capacity on hand appears to be adequate, treatment appears to be adequate, elevated, ground and trans- ground storage and transmission, distribution, capacity deficits are forecast and need to be addressed as part of the C I P and the impact fee. Next step would be to work with a group to hone, to true up the data that I've got, make sure they agree, figure out what it would cost to resolve the deficits, once everyone agreed on those deficits, and then allocate it to growth, and we're done with our water. Wastewater is the same issue in terms of growth. I'm, uh, Water Development Board was low and I got three others, and I'm recommending the four percent for the group's consideration as a conservative estimate to plan based on. In terms of wastewater capacity, we've talked about this, you've got twenty-two point eight M G D on the ground currently of treatment capacity, of which you're using thirteen. Lift stations, this I know is gonna change, this goes all the way back to two thousand and two, when you had ninety-seven lift stations with a hundred point six million gallons a day of capacity. That's a peak to average ratio of four point four, which doesn't mean a whole lot in this context, but that's benchmark for pumping, for lift stations. You gotta hit peak hour, peak day flows. I really need to tighten that number up, I need a new inventory of the lift stations on the ground at P U B and the capacity of each one, so we can figure it out.
All of this, you're, you're telling us that you need all of this information, have you since requested this information from P U B?
We requested all this information the w- for, the week we were awarded this engagement.
Has it been accessed to you, have you, have you had access to some of this, has, have you been receiving this information?
I got about three quarters of it, everything that I'm addressing today that I still need, I never received.
Mr. Campidano, is there a problem with regards to trying to provide the additional information that Mr. Snowden needs? I mean, you, you, you guys have all the information.
Can you speak up to the mic? Well, if he's eighty percent done and he's gotten three fourths of the information, then they're pretty close.
Exactly.
A lot of the information he's requested, he's gotten, I think there's some things on there that still need to be worked on, he's mentioned T C B, working with them. There are some updates that still need to be done, uh, I mean, those numbers, I mean, I, I'm not the engineer, but I can tell you, we have a lot more than ninety-seven lift stations.
And, and, and he, he said that.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess my, our, our request is that you please, so that he can finish this, please provide whatever additional information he needs in order to, uh, to make his, uh, doing his analysis and do his calculations and what have you, finish the study.
Again, I know we have some work to do, but I also think we need to have some work with Mr. Snowden to do as well, so, and, and this is the first, I, I guess from this point forward, we, we need to get together and do some stuff. Including, uh, not only ourselves, but obviously, we've got a couple other third parties, uh, whether it's Black and Beach or Turner Colley and Braden, so, we will do that.
Let me ask you something Jeff, real quick.
Yes sir.
After you're done with this completely, do y'all certify it, or do you have to get P U B's acknowledgement? Do you have to sit down with P U B and acknowledge what you've come up with and get what, what they've given you, come to consensus to where, because from what I understand, I was told at P U B that you're not certified to, to sign off on this, am I right? Because from what I understand, I was told at P U B that you're not certified to, to sign off on this. Am I right or wrong?
Well, in terms of the engineer's stamp that would, would.
Engineer what?
There's a engineer's stamp, P E stamp, that Black and Beach provided on their study. We, we're not engineers, so we don't stamp a document and, uh.
But by the same token, Black and Beach couldn't stamp off on something that you would.
Well, right, and they wouldn't, I'm sure they wouldn't be willing to. And, and we have cer, we've tried to make contact numerous times with the gentleman at Black and Beach who did stamp the study and we haven't had any success in that. No, sir. My understanding is he's no longer with Black and Beach.
Well, that's understandable. But you will be able to, after this study is complete, you will sign off on this.
Absolutely, we'll sign off on this and, and, and I don't, I can't think of one example where we ever came back before the body and said, here's our numbers, we disagree with the utility, these are our numbers. We're here to work with P U B and understand their positions and then reach a consensus on numbers, all the way down to the smallest detail. And it, to the extent that we show up to here in front of you guys and say, we couldn't agree, that's a failure on our part because we're in the business to lay the issues out and drum up an agreement. And that's what we need to do to get done.
Mr. Mala?
I think, again, we have to clearly understand where we're at. You need some information from P U B and you're gonna come up with a recommendation, whatever your recommendation is. But in order for us to comply with state, statute three ninety-five and state law and all that stuff, we need the engineer's stamp to submit in order to, to do, fulfill the process.
That's correct. And if you did it in the same manner that you did it last time, you would use P U B's stamp.
Let me finish, please. So, if you take out the plant, you talked about taking out the plant, okay? How can we certify something that we disagree, that our experts disagree with you? How can we, how can we, I mean, how are we gonna do that? Because some of this is your opinion also, okay, that we don't need this, we do need that. I'm having a little trouble with that because you're asking somebody to certify your work, which we may be disagreeing. And also, you're asking us to maybe go reconfigure what was already approved and done to meet your expectations, reconfigure, which I think Mayor has to go back to the board because we charged and paid for the study and all that stuff and it was approved by, by, by the board, okay? So, some of this stuff that he's asking for, if I understand right, will require the engineers to reconfigure for you.
No.
And, and I think that, I've got a direct response to that specific example and I think it's a good one. On the issue of a wastewater treatment plant, a new footprint, five M G D costing five bucks a gallon for twenty-five million dollars versus conveying the sewage from one plant to the other, I'd like to do the life cycle cost analysis and if that indicates that the plant's the better option, we can come back to the committee and recommend that. If it indicates that it's not, but it's close, same thing. Let's give the committee the full information and let them make the decision on which option. Absolutely, yes, sir. But that's my, that's my, I guess, solution to that specific example on five M G D of brand-new capacity at five dollars a gallon, which I've talked to about eight engineers on that all over the state who tell me that a new plant should cost between two and three bucks a gallon. So, I'm, I'm still curious how you got to five. Okay.
I wish the experts were here because it's not, it's unfair. Or you quote the numbers that they can't respond to, or there's nobody to respond to. They may have a reason why.
Yes, sir.
All right, you're on page forty-three of your.
Yes, sir. Uh, just to the next steps, agree on the method, on the method to review and agree on the key assumptions and metrics, which I've talked about. When we finalize the C I P, we'll, we'll complete the preliminary maximum impact fee calculations, which will entail submitting as our deliverable a report, which is probably gonna be fifty to sixty pages long. This PowerPoint slide is not our product. It's not what we're being paid to produce. We're gonna be, we're gonna produce a full report with all these issues detailed in the narrative, all the tables reflected. And that's the deliverable. So, I want to make sure there's no confusion. This isn't what we, this is part of what we were compensated for, but certainly not the final deliverable. It's gonna be a full-out study. It'll be an exhilarating read, but that's, that's what we're gonna provide. And we'd like to next schedule a workshop to go over those.
Oh, let's do one tomorrow.
Jeff, one of the things that you gotta get with, uh, P U B, is it to come up with what they plan to actually fund? They don't plan to fund a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Do you have to know that?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, that would be one of the things that you would have to sit down with them and decide what they actually plan to fund? Why, why is that important?
Well, it's important because when you draft a capital improvement plan, put it out for public review and comment and then formally adopt it as a basis of your impact fee calculations, you can't, you can't then go back and cut out seventy-five percent of it and use the same impact fee that that was based on.
The impact fee calculation is a.
Direct function of the capital improvement.
Direct function of, of the capital improvement plan, how much you plan to spend.
That's right.
Now, since the kayak is meeting and if there are changes, those changes can be made to the C I P during, not necessarily what you're doing, Mr. Snowden, but during the kayak process, these meetings that they've been, well, have been started going on again. Is that right?
I think that, I think that, uh, the way it would work ideally is for P U B and myself and their external support group to develop a new capital improvement plan that reflects some of the items we've discussed today. Then approach the kayak with that modified C I P and very clear and direct data with respect to the capacity that it would provide and go in that manner as opposed to the kayak being responsible for, it's certainly responsible for the adoption.
What I'm saying is that that information can be brought to the kayak.
Yes, sir.
Which can then modify, not modify, or what have you with the C I P.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But just to, to elaborate on what Mr. Campanano said, even if you take some projects out, you may end up at the end of the day having a bigger number.
That's correct, absolutely correct.
Of impact.
Yeah, it's, you may have bigger, you may have the same, you may have less. All of these factors are going to affect the calculation.
But I, I can tell you, one of the things that will result in a lower impact fee is a ten-year planning period versus a five-year. I mean, if you're, if you're considering adding five M G D of capacity to twenty-two point eight and you're only using thirteen, wouldn't it make sense to divide that over ten years of new growth versus five to result in a lower fee?
Absolutely. Mr. Mala?
Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Um, the allowable, I don't wanna get into semantics, yes, my, 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 my word.
Remember, we're not debating.
Okay, recommended allowable meant, what I meant by that, that if we wanted to do eighty-four million dollars of, of, of capital improvements, the allowable recommended rate in order to meet that was three thousand ninety, okay? That can be, that was the recommended allowable.
That was the maximum calculated.
But, yeah, but.
But it is the number.
Calculate, but you can't, you can't do eighty-four million if you don't have that income coming in to pay for it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
But even if you did the max, you still don't have eighty-four million.
I understand that, but we can't fund, we can't do capital improvements if we're not collecting. That's what, that's, that's what I meant by that. So, that can be, that can be adjusted. What I'm saying is this, whether it's eighty-four million or sixty million, he's gonna, he's gonna make a recommendation no matter what you take out, okay? It's gonna be the recommended also allowable, allowable, okay? Which will also be subject to adjusting how much growth we want to do and how mu, how we're gonna fund that growth, okay? Is that right?
You really define how much growth that is allowable when you adopt your land use assumptions. That's when you.
Which is what we did.
Right.
We, we, we came up with a hundred and twenty-four million, eighty-four million, and, and the maximum three thousand ninety to allow us to, to.
Well, on the land use assumption side, Mr. Mala, you, as a body, you, you agreed that you would fund new capacity demands at a rate of five percent per annum. Based on that, you went to C I P to figure out.
But you can go down, you can go down, like it was suggested two thousand one thirty-three, so then we can't do the, P U B cannot do the capital improvements that was projected with the three thousand ninety with two thousand one thirty-three, so it would be less, right? I think, I think that answers his question.
But if you change it to ten years.
Yeah, now, yeah, you change it, yeah, but you're changing it. What I'm saying is based on what we had, okay, and what.
But even assuming, not changing, not changing.
What Mr. Campanano was saying is this, that we can't do a hundred and twenty-four million.
We don't have the money.
If we don't have the money.
That's right.
So, that's what's gonna drive what we do, the money, the money we get. So, it's not that P U B does not want to do the capital improvements, it's that we don't have the funding for it.
You still can't do the calculation without knowing what that sum of money is, whether it's eighty-four, one thirty-two, or twenty-five, whatever that number is. That's right. Okay, I think.
We can't do the hundred and twenty-four million. We know we can't do the hundred and twenty-four million unless we have an amount. If you have a less amount, then you cut back on the capital improvements.
Well, but, but again, okay.
Unless you wanna raise rates, unless you wanna raise rates to pay for it.
Even if this commission in the future said, we're not gonna raise rates, but we went with the maximum for argument's sake of thirty, uh, three thousand ninety, we know that's gonna generate, according to projections, X amount of dollars. So, that's the number that P U B works with and says, okay, well, we're all gonna have money to generate forty-seven, I think is what the number came out to, right? Forty-three, forty-seven? Forty-three. So, that's, so that's the number they figure out, okay, we can build one plant and do these other, that's very, very important. Okay, Mr. Snowden, you're at the end of your presentation, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna say.
We've, okay, we've had a lot of questions.
One more. Why? I just wanna, I, I'm just to be very clear and make everybody very clear, regardless, regardless if we adopt the maximum or we, wherever we go, there will still be rate increases. No?
There will be, if, if you want to do everything, if the, if the amount.
Your mic's not on.
Generated by the developer is not sufficient and if we want to do the project, then there has to be additional funding. Rate increases would be one of the, probably the main source. It, it, it could be, there's other sources, but the rate, the, the rate payer arguably is always the one that's just holding back on. So, what you heard from the commission, the consensus is we're not gonna raise rates. So, therefore, if the new impact fee, whatever that number is, generates thirty million or fifty million, well, yes, what that would be.
That shall be it.
Until it gets to the point where, you know, uh, the city commission, if we have a choice, if that's where we can just be down the road.
Wrapping up.
Sum up, yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is, this is an excerpt from a nineteen ninety study done by R W Beck, which I commented on earlier. Very well done. And this is a sensitivity analysis of different impact fee options. If you adopt this amount of impact fee, here's what your rates will increase by as a percentage. This is part of our deliverable. We can get the remainder of the data we need. We can bring this information to you and let you, the kayak and the commission, make an informed decision as to, okay, maybe we need to add more capacity than the ten years required due to economies of scale or whatever reason. Are we willing to raise rates by twenty-five cents a month for that, fifty cents, zero cents? We can provide you that data as part of our deliverable and, uh, we're looking forward to doing that.
The more information you provide.
The better decision we can make.
Exactly.
And I would, I would classify that as my closing remarks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden. All right, first of all, let me apologize to everybody for, for getting a little out of control. But this is what happens when people try to speak over one another. We've tried real hard not to do that, so I'll, let me extend my apologies to everybody, including Commissioner Atkinson. Thank you all for being here. Unfortunately, this is not gonna be the last meeting on this, but I, I certainly feel at least that we're making some progress in, in reaching a consensus. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a policy issue, not a political one, all right? Thank you all for being here with us this evening. This meeting is adjourned.